All right, it's nine o'clock, yes?
I couldn't do this.
All right. All right, are we ready? Okay. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, October 14th, 2025. We will begin this morning with our flag salute led by our county council, Karen Schwab.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we are going to begin the morning as usual with our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda have been recommended for approval by the county executive department. All items will be approved by a single roll call vote. Anyone may ask to address consent items prior to the board taking action, and the item may be removed for a discussion. So do we have anybody want to remove an item from consent on the board? Anyone in the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? And nobody online? All right. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Move approval.
Second. All right, we have a motion by Demeté, second by Gustafson. Roll call, please. Landon?
Yes.
Demeté?
Yes.
Jones?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Gork?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Next is the opportunity for public comment, and persons may address the board on items not on this agenda. Please limit comments to three minutes per person since the time allocated for public comment is 15 minutes. If all comments cannot be heard within the 15-minute time limit, public comment period will be taken up at the end of the regular session. And as a reminder, the board is not permitted to take any action on items addressed under public comment. So come on up. Good morning, Jennifer. Nice to see you on this beautiful rainy day.
Yeah, good morning. Thank you, Jennifer. Placer County. Today, I'd like to give you some of my observations and concerns about the October 1st Hopeway meeting in Penrin. I do want to thank staff in the county for putting this meeting on. I know it takes a lot of work, and I appreciate these meetings. The meeting, my observations were the meeting was tense, filled with passive aggressiveness and anger from both the citizens and the staff. My concern, while there were many, were when we got to the question and answer portion of the meeting, the questions weren't being answered. So citizens would ask questions, and we'd have to ask the same question over and over again, and we wouldn't get an answer. Or it was in like a haiku poetry form that never went around to the answer. It was kind of like this, "Do you have any roses? Well, roses are red, they have thorns, you fertilize them and cut them, next question." And the answers just kept snowballing away from the actual question. We had a citizen who also wanted to do a follow-up question after we were allowed to do some follow-up questions, and staff wouldn't allow him to. People were standing down, giving their turns away for him to speak, and he still wasn't allowed to speak. People were yelling in the audience, "Let him speak," and he still couldn't speak. The developer constantly would hear very well-thought-out questions and say, "I don't understand the questions," and the questions wouldn't get answered. And to the point where he actually, I felt like he humiliated one of our citizens. And then he pretended they were in some kind of joke that nobody else knew about, but if you saw her walk away, she wasn't enjoying it or being in a joke with him. I only bring this up because we're going to have the planning commission meeting coming up. A lot of people are feeling hurt and angry. And when questions aren't answered, and we're coming in for information, and we don't get it, it kind of causes distrust from the citizens to the county. And so I just wanted to bring this up because we're in a time right now where we really need to pull together and work with each other. Even if I don't agree with you guys, I still appreciate you, and I want to work with you even if my outcome doesn't come because I know you're balancing things I don't understand. And so I was hoping you could direct staff and developers in the future, when questions are asked, to give yes and no responses at least. And then if things need to be followed up, give that information after the yes or no question so that citizens feel like they're being heard, and we can start feeling like we can trust more and get the information we're coming to these meetings for, so we're not wasting everybody's time. Anyways, I'm really not trying to complain, but I've been to a lot of these meetings, and this was really the worst one I've ever been to, and I'm just hoping they don't continue this way.
Thank you for your comments, Jennifer. Appreciate that very much.
Gary Mappa. I really couldn't hear what she was saying because the microphone, she wasn't talking into it close enough. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I wasn't going to speak today. I came as an observer, but when the subject came up of the Hope Way Apartments, I'm compelled to say something. I went to the meeting at Del Orem High, and it was embarrassing. It was embarrassing the way the public treated staff, treated the developer, treated every speaker, spoke over them. I even had to, I never embarrassed myself, but I even got up and virtually spoke loudly to the crowd to tell them to shut up and let the people make their presentation. And they backed off, but still, I don't think staff, the developer, or the other speaker was on transportation or whatever treated any of those people with respect. None. Now, the meeting this week coming up is for the purpose of testifying to the planning commission. At least I think that's what it is. Hopefully, that's what it's going to be and not, you know, bring your own tar and feathers to the meeting because you're going to get tar and feathered. So I hope county is able to tone the crowd down and let them participate, as they should, in a respectful way, not like what happened at Del Orem. Any support I might have had to maybe change my mind on different items was destroyed by that crowd. My desire to even help the town of Penrin with some of the items was destroyed. And I would love, if you guys bring sewer to Applegate and water, I'll get behind you on a project. We'll do 500 units. This "not my neighborhood" stuff has got to stop. I'm probably reaching out of my time. What's that? Yeah, so I urge everybody that can go to go to that meeting, speak how important it is for housing. Housing right now, my daughter can't even find a decent rental. And if she has to move in with me, you guys are going to be sorry because I'm even going to get out there more and lobby for housing when your own family can't live in their own town. That's ridiculous. And then when you look at this location, I can see the freeway. That's fantastic. We could have made Kentucky Greens into a low-income project, you know, 30 or 40 years ago. Downtown Penrin, right around the corner. So I don't know, I apologize, but my blood pressure's up again, which is good.
Well, I don't know if that's good, but thank you, Gary, for your comments. Appreciate it. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Kevin Daly, and I'm a longtime resident of Placer County. I'm also a member of Placer People of Faith and the Lutheran Church of the Resurrection. And I'm here today to bring your attention to some information that we received from Gary Mappa at our last Placer, excuse me, Placer People of Faith meeting. In his handout, he points out that the federal government is proposing to reduce funding for permanent supportive housing under HUD's Continuum of Care Program from $3.3 billion to $1.1 billion. This means that funding for permanent housing could fall from 87% to as little as 30%. For Placer County, this could jeopardize hundreds of rent subsidies supporting those who cannot afford market rents without federal assistance. Another impact, if this funding change does take place, will be to further stress our court system as eviction cases arise. We know how hard the board has worked to shelter the homeless over the past years and has also added the Department 50 Court to help with court case logs. We would therefore like to know if your staff is already working on how this funding reduction will affect Placer County as well as any solutions they propose. As you work on this new situation, if there are steps we can take after making our congregations aware of this coming change, such as contacting our congressional representatives or assisting low-income residents who may lose their rent subsidies, please contact us at the addresses below with such information. Thank you. And I have a handout here with Beth Gonzalez, who will speak next, in my own address. And I also have a printout of what Gary sent us. So I'll give those to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Good morning, Beth.
Good morning. It's great to see you all. Otherwise, I'd be at a Zoom meeting, so it's better to be here. So I just want to reiterate the concern. I'm sure you all know the concern. I don't doubt that you know. I'm sure you know the news. My concern or suggestion is that Placer Collaborative Network and other agencies that can work together have, there should be some kind of task force. I mean, we're in a tsunami of horrible things about to happen, and we're not prepared for it. Nobody's prepared for it. But there has to be some kind of, I hate to use the word "task force" because it's not my favorite word here, but some kind of committee that will oversee all these people who are going to be losing their subsidies. What are we going to do with them? Like, I know we have all been working on housing the homeless. Now, there will be more homeless, not less homeless. And there's no place so far that we have, that we can send them. And there are a lot of nonprofits, as you know, who work with permanent supportive housing in this county, and they do marvelous things. But it's not, it's not normal, and we have to prepare for the worst because maybe we can help some people. So, thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Anyone else in the public? Yes, sir. Good morning.
Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name's Jim Dion. And my wife and I moved to Placer County just outside of Colfax over 20 years ago. We bought a little three-bedroom, two-bath place on 10 acres, and we lived there for a while. And then we're able to get another spot and move there. And then my daughter stayed in this home, my older boy. We were involved in the river fire four years ago. We were the first in line. My daughter had a five-bedroom home right next to the campground. Beautiful view. My wife and I had the middle house, and then my son and his family had another 10 acres with three bedrooms. The man that I bought it from had died, and the three parcels beyond mine were for sale, so I got a bridge loan anyway. I ended up with the property. And then the fire hits, and we, of course, were devastated. I mean, all three of my family members lost our homes and everything in it. And so I'm trying to rebuild it back, and I actually sold my other house so I could pay off the mortgage that I had and didn't have any debt. And the PG&E came, and they did the underground power, which was expensive for me to get hooked up and time-consuming. It was a couple of years before it happened. I fought with the water company a little bit, got it set up. FEMA came in, took all the debris away. I had a motor home that I was staying in out there while I rebuilt, and I got a building permit for an ADU. And then I was told by the Planning and Building Department that I couldn't stay in my motor home, that it was camping, and there's not camping allowed on my own private property in Placer County. So I go, "Okay, what do I do?" And they said, "Well, you can have a tiny home, or a park-style home, or a destination home." So my wife and I went to Turlock somewhere, bought a brand-new destination trailer, had it put on the property, had the septic hooked up and inspected by a professional company, and everything was going along smooth. I spent tens of thousands of dollars repairing the road, cleaning it up and stuff. Then environmental health pays me a visit. And after the fire, I guess they were researching records, and they informed me that my septic tank was never permitted. My house was finalized 17 years prior. It was a beautiful home. I've got the final paperwork right here. And I asked them, "How did the house get finalized without an approved septic?" And they just get dumb look on their face and can't answer that. I still haven't had an answer to that. So the building inspector gave me 30 days to vacate the premises. And I told him he didn't have the authority to do that, and that, I'm sorry I'm taking too long here, but this is really important for me.
Yeah, feel free to continue.
Four years now, I've been told by Placer County now, a man named, I don't even know who this is. Anyway, the community development gave me 90 days to get off my property. I've gone over that. He said he's going to call code enforcement, which means the cops are going to come and arrest my 73-year-old wife. We're in our mid-70s. I can't just pick up and move. So now we're in fear every day that the police are going to come and either summons me or maybe take me to jail. I don't know. I hope that you can at least ask your bureaucrats to back off, you know? I'm the only one up there that's trying to rebuild. We've got 20 permits out of 100 homes. We've got 20 permits out of 100 homes that burned. That's not a good average, you guys. I'm the only one for 100 acres, and I've got the power and the water. Now the septic problem, it's a permitted, I'm not permitted, but it's legitimate. It's a concrete tank. It's got a repair station. Two companies came out and said, yes, everything's fine. I've got the paperwork right here. Again, I'm sorry for taking too much time, but please ask them to back off me, you know? My wife's not in good health, and she's thinking, do we have to, the animals have to move too? I've got a dog and a couple of cats. If I move out of there, the rats are going to take over my coach, you know? And I don't have anywhere to go. I sold my other house to pay for this.
Well, thank you, sir, for bringing this to our attention. And I...
My staff have been working on this with Mr. Deon and trying to work through some of these situations that I'm well aware.
Your staff told me to go get a company to come out and dig some holes for $1,050.
So, thank you. And I appreciate you coming and letting us know, sir. And I'm very sorry for the loss, and we very much hear that this has to be worked through. So I appreciate you coming and letting us know what happened.
Should I be in fear of the police coming?
I can't answer that, but I don't think we're going to necessarily have police take you off of your property. But I...
Thank you again for hearing me.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public wish to make a comment here in the chambers? All right. Anybody in Tahoe?
No one in Tahoe. We do have one online, though.
All right, thank you.
Commenter, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Greetings, Board of Supervisors. Diane Loise Lassie from Christian Valley Park Community Services District 6 tickets in the county. I'm excited about the fact that I actually have already forwarded to you my plea letter to have you reinstate a two-way teleconferencing for Zoom because SB 707 did pass. It has been chapered as of October 3rd, which is all stated in my letter. And I've asked the board clerk to disseminate it to all parties that can reinstate this immediately, regardless of the fact that you don't have the hard line to have to match it and make it happen by July 1st. Well, in light of the fact that you have such a contentious issue with the development in Penrin and other projects throughout, you know, West Placer, with South Placer, this is so critical. And by not doing it, you're showing your spots that it's about you and not about community and connection with the community. I urge everybody to read what I wrote online. And I will remind you, our sister county, El Dorado, has stayed in the hybrid model regardless, and this was always an option. It wasn't a mandate to stop two-way teleconferencing for the entire county. So I encourage you to do that ASAP, sooner than later, for sure. And if you drag it till July, I hope it reflects on your reelections. I'm also going to state that I think there needs to be a review after listening to this gentleman's story. I'm sure he's only one of many, many. And I'm going to say that the county could do a lot in terms of keeping rents low, because this is an income problem, y'all. It's not a amount of properties available problem. That's just been, that's rhetoric, and it's been fed to us in such an evil way, because nobody has the income to match what the rents are. And that is tied to property taxes. Prop 19, when it was transferred to children, took away and reset the tax base. Therefore, the rents had to go up. I think that there could be contractual mandates put together, ordinances put together where the county works with those types of properties and gives them a tax break to keep the rents lower.
Dan, can you wrap up, please?
There are just other ways to go in this process. And so I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No further comments.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Appreciate you coming and sharing your concerns. And with that, we have time for Board Member and County Executive Reports. Do I have reports from my colleagues? Supervisor Gusterson?
Thank you. Last week, under a public comment, we heard a pretty impassioned public comment from a local elected official. This morning, we've received a letter from the gathering, and I haven't had time to review it yet in response to those comments. And I just wanted to put it on the record that we did receive it. So those listening know, we do have a response to some of the comments that were received last week. As is many things, we often, as we just heard this morning, have two sides to observations of a meeting. And there's two sides to every story, and our job is to try to make sure we hear all of that and appreciate the comments from both sides. I also wanted to report that yesterday I attended the American River Forest Health Tour that was put on by Assembly Member Patterson, hosted by Assembly Member Patterson, PCWA, the Mountain Counties Water Resources Association, Sierra Nevada Conservancy, and the Nature Conservancy. We visited Oxbow Reservoir, looked at the impacts that both the King Fire and now the Mosquito Fire have had on sedimentation in the reservoir, and toured it with three other assembly members. And State Senator Roger Nilo was also in attendance for the full day of touring that facility, as well as some of our forest health projects. Unfortunately, the Forest Service couldn't attend because of the furloughs. They were not able to participate. But most of the properties we were looking at were in their area, and they've been good partners in getting these projects going. But the intent was to educate the state officials that were on the tour, as well as many of the staffers, on the needs we have, that Placer County Water Agency and our Placer County residents are in charge of these facilities, but only use 7% of the water that is brought through those facilities. The 93% goes to other areas of the state. So the plea is obvious that we get both state and federal assistance in protecting our water infrastructure that goes far beyond our boundaries to others. And that was not lost on a couple of the legislative analysts that were on the tour and were talking amongst ourselves about how important it was that the county had taken these steps with Kerry Timmer, with the work we're doing in the Middle Fork. And I just wanted to report that to the board. I thought it was worthwhile, despite the somewhat inclement weather that we were experiencing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Gusterson. Appreciate that report and really glad, and thank you to you, staff, all the departments that brought out those state legislators to see what's happening up here. I think that's so important. Supervisor Jones?
Yes, I would like to mention that last, last week, Thursday night, I think it was, several of us supervisors attended the Placer County Chaplaincy fundraiser to help raise money for the chaplaincy. The chaplaincy does a huge duty to any and all who lose a family member. They come out and they do what they can, console, help you, pay bills, whatever you need, they're there to help you. And they are not paid. It's strictly, it's all volunteer. And so there's really no source of money. Fundraising is the way they get their money. And so it's, if you've never heard of them, look them up, because it's quite an organization, and they do really wonderful things. And I also forgot to mention that about two weeks ago, I attended a ceremony that was hosted by the Granite Bay Rotary at the Granite Bay Park in honor of Gold Star Moms. And we recognized, gosh, we had about eight or 10 Gold Star Moms there with sons going all the way back. One woman's son was killed 20 years ago, and they still, you know, you'll never, you'll never forget the loss of your, your child, son or daughter, when they lose their lives in, in serving their country. But anyway, it was very moving, and, and the Gold Star Moms were very appreciative. So it was, it was a great ceremony.
Thank you for sharing that. Either my colleagues over here? No. Just one thing, which I really appreciate, the feedback on the Hope Way Community Forum, and I think Mr. Mappa said it well. It's really unfortunate that we are in a season, times where people are not being respectful of one another when we're having public comment or we're having public forums. I appreciate the decorum that my colleagues show, and the decorum that we have in these chambers. I really appreciate that. But I am really going to encourage the Chair of the Planning Commission, our staff, when we have that meeting coming before the Planning Commission, to really encourage that we are respectful of one another. Because to his point, when we aren't, quite frankly, I don't want to listen to somebody when they're yelling at me. And we're all human, and when somebody starts wagging their finger at me and yelling at me, my response is, I don't want to respond very positively. And if we're going to get to a place where we're having reasonable conversations with one another about policy, about challenging issues, respect is of utmost importance. And I know, I mean, I'm speaking to the choir, to those in this room, because we do it well. But that's really important, no matter what situation we're in, because it's hard enough to do this work, but we need to respect one another in different opinions. So I'm going to encourage that to be the case at the Planning Commission meeting, which I think is, is it this week? Is it Thursday?
Thursday.
All right. Thank you. We are not yet ready for our nine, oh, Daniel, yes, I'm sorry. Thank you. We might be ready for our 9:30 time dynam, depending on what Daniel has to say. Appreciate it, Daniel. Good morning.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to take a moment and address some recent comments regarding tax share agreements. Tax split determinations are typically made on a project-by-project basis, reflecting the unique impacts of each proposal and the results of a fiscal and service-level analysis. Because of this, splits can vary depending on factors such as project size, location, and service needs. It's important to distinguish project-based splits from a city's overall or total property tax share, which represents the combined distribution across all areas within city limits, both long-established neighborhoods and newly annexed areas. Overall splits may differ from project-based figures due to factors such as changes in laws, shifts in service delivery costs, the availability of other funding sources like community facilities districts, and the varying characteristics of the areas served. Tax share agreements should not be based solely on a comparison to other agencies' overall tax share splits, and must take into account the city's service needs and the county's commitment to providing public safety services that extend beyond city limits and benefit all residents of Placer County. The county has received a request from the City of Lincoln to renegotiate multiple tax share agreements, and has been seeking information from the city to assist with our review. With confidence, I can assure the board that your CEO's office has been responsive to Lincoln's request. Our first meeting is scheduled for October 20th, but I'll note that the county also offered meeting times for last week for a more expedited meeting. Unfortunately, the city has not responded to that email. If there are any questions about the county's good faith, I'd point to the limited-term property share tax agreement that is providing up to $13 million of additional property tax to the City of Lincoln to support their public safety services. The county awaits the city's fiscal and service-level analysis and the meeting next week to continue fact-finding efforts. I assure you that the county has been and will continue to be engaged and responsive.
Thank you, Daniel. I appreciate that very much. Sometimes it's important that we set the record straight. All right. With that, look at that. It is 9:31. So just perfect timing for an opportunity this morning to recognize, we have a commendation recognizing Judge Alan Paneshi for his 39 years of service, judicial service in Placer County. Good morning, Judge Paneshi. So I'm going to read the commendation, and then I'll have my colleagues say something. We will, you can say something, or actually, we'll probably have the public come up before we do, just so that you are aware. So it is really, it is my pleasure. In the matter of commendation recognizing the Honorable Alan Paneshi for 39 years of dedicated judicial service to Placer County. Whereas the Honorable Alan V. Paneshi is retiring from the Superior Court of California, County of Placer, after serving as a justice court judge, municipal court judge, and superior court judge for 39 years. And whereas Judge Paneshi was first appointed to the Tahoe Justice Court by the Placer County Board of Supervisors in August 1986, following his service as Mayor of Roseville in 1985, and a distinguished career in private legal practice from 1977 to 1986. And whereas Judge Paneshi became a superior court judge in 1998, and went on to serve as presiding judge from October 2002 through 2004, and again from May 2009 until his retirement, providing nearly 18 years of steadfast leadership. And whereas Judge Paneshi dedicated time to mentoring new judges and court staff, sharing his knowledge and experience to help the next generation of leaders carry forward a culture of fairness and public service. And whereas Judge Paneshi's leadership extended beyond the courtroom through his engagement with local agencies, justice-associated organizations, and community organizations, thereby strengthening the ties between the courts and the citizens they serve. And whereas his dedication to fairness, community service, and the integrity of the judiciary has left a lasting legacy on the Superior Court of Placer County and the greater Placer County community. Now therefore, let it be known that the above commendation was duly passed by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Placer at a regular meeting on October 14th, 2025, on behalf of the citizens of Placer County. The Placer County Board of Supervisors honors the Honorable Alan Paneshi for his decades of distinguished judicial service, consistent leadership, and unwavering commitment to the people of Placer County. And we congratulate you on your retirement. Thank you, Judge Paneshi. I want to see if any of my colleagues want to say anything. And I would like to actually actually to come forward, just so that we can see you, which would be very nice. You don't have to stand in the background. But if anybody here would like to make a comment, that would be terrific.
I can start. It's such a privilege to get to be up here and recognizing your incredible career, Alan. That's an amazing sense of our justice system because of the tone you set and your compassionate and caring ways. I also want to recognize your family who stood behind you through this. Susan is back there, and Alina, who I know all too well, and two of your sons. It is a sacrifice to your family, including sometimes not-so-savory individuals who might contact you after determination, whether justified or not. And you shared those stories with us last week at lunch. But maybe my favorite story was I was asking Alan about some of the fun stories he might have. And I won't use names other than your name, because the gentleman put on an envelope, "Big Al, the judge, please let me out." And so I thought that was a really great story that you shared with us. And I never heard you spoken of as Big Al, because it's the Honorable Judge Paneshi. But clearly, the leadership and vision and the steady hand you've had on our courts has just been incredible for our community. The caring and compassion and fairness of justice determined here in our Placer County courts is outstanding. So thank you, Alan, for your incredible service. And thank you, Susan, and family for your incredible service and support to him.
Thank you, Supervisor Gusterson. Supervisor Landon?
Thanks. Well, Supervisor Gore just a few minutes ago talked about decorum and fairness in conversations with people. And you have really exemplified that in your leadership throughout the county. And I think, I don't think many people realize how much of an impact you've had on children and families in our community, and just your engagement in nonprofits and giving back to the community hasn't, doesn't go unnoticed. And I very much hope that your retirement is going to be a time of enjoyment with your family and being able to do a lot of the things that maybe you didn't have time to do. But you really are leaving a lasting legacy for our community, and I just want to say thank you for your service to Placer County.
Thank you, Supervisor Landon. Supervisor Dematte?
I just wanted to say thank you. I had a, you know, short term with you being here. So I appreciate what we got to know. I got to know... So I appreciate what we got to know, I got to know from you. So congratulations on your retirement. It seems like everybody's retiring, I just got here. I don't know if it's me or not, but thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Jones.
Yes, thank you so much, Judge Paneshi. It was very nice that you invited me, when I was a new supervisor, to your office and had a chance to get to see the workings behind the screen, behind the back door, and also an opportunity to get to know you much better. And I really do appreciate that. And I would say, if I had a drink in my hand, I would raise a toast to your tireless dedication and service to the citizens of Placer County to uphold the true interest of justice. You have had an exemplary career, as everyone has seen. And not to mention that I think you're a wonderful person. You have a wonderful family, and all the good that you have done in the county. Thank you so much for everything that you've done for all of us.
Thank you, Supervisor Jones. And I might just say, I'm excited that you get to retire. You have worked hard and tirelessly for our community. But because your last name is Paneshi, and your father very much volunteered in our community, as well as your brother, I know that you won't be far away from being involved in our community. At least, I hope that that is the case. So thank you for your legacy, your family's legacy. You have, I know, done your father very proud in all that you have done in our community. And so I'm very, very thankful for that. And with that, I would love to have anybody else in the public. We're going to give the attorney the last word. So if there's anybody in the public who would like to come up and say something. Oh, I will let our CEO do that. I keep ignoring him this morning, sorry, Daniel.
Thank you, good morning, good morning, Judge Paneshi. Just on behalf of myself and other CEOs before me, I just want to appreciate your work with things like the Criminal Justice Policy Committee in bringing together all of the different components and aspects of the criminal justice system and for meaningful and collaborative discussions and resolutions. So I wanted to appreciate that for my firsthand experience. And also to just double down on the training and development of staff behind you, or below you in the organization. And a shout out to Jake Chatters, who has been an excellent partner for the county and look forward to working with him in the future.
Thank you, Daniel. All right, public comment time. Anybody from the public wish to come on up? Good morning, Sheriff.
Well, good morning. Wayne Wu, you're Placer County Sheriff. I don't want to turn my back to you, but anyway. I want to echo Daniel's comments, honestly. I want to thank you for your leadership, specifically when it comes to the Criminal Justice Policy Committee. You know, in 2011, the state passed down AB 109, or Public Safety Realignment, one of the biggest structural changes of our criminal justice system that we've seen. And then, since then, they've doubled down multiple times between 2011 and now with criminal justice reform. And Judge Paneshi has chaired that committee and enabled the system that is extremely complex to work through some of the toughest challenges to face our profession in the justice system in probably 100 years. And his leadership and ability to guide some of those conversations and look out for the best interests of the citizens of this community is why we have such high quality of life. And it will have a lasting impact. So, you know, thank you for a job well done. Thank you for everything you've done over the years. But specifically, thank you for helping maintain our extremely complex criminal justice system here in Placer County, maintain some accountability during some of the most trying times. Because I'm still a firm believer that our justice system is not perfect, but it's the best thing in the free world that exists today. And it's extremely complex to navigate. And you've done a yeoman's job, so thank you, Judge. And enjoy retirement, congratulations.
Thank you, Sheriff. Good morning, Judge Penny.
Good morning.
Oh, the other one.
Hold on. So my name is Jeff Penny. I'm a Superior Court Judge here that has worked with Judge Paneshi for a long time. I've been a judge for 20 years, working with him for over 20 years. And I can just tell you, having my office right next to him for many years, that he's a dedicated worker who cares about the public, who is an outstanding leader for our court and for our community, and a great example for me, since I will continue to serve for a few more years of leadership and commitment to our county. He led us through some very difficult times, through COVID, right? Very difficult time for the court, right? You think about all the rights that we had to balance, people's rights versus the issues that COVID brought. And I'm proud to say that under Judge Paneshi's leadership, we never closed. There are many courts throughout the state that closed, completely closed down the courts. We never closed, ever. We always served the public, even through COVID. And that was due to Judge Paneshi's leadership. And so I want to thank him for his service. He's also a friend of mine, and I value his friendship very much. I'm going to miss his sense of humor. And we're going to try to follow his example of leadership and commitment to the county. Many times, I have discussed cases with him, or, and we always come around to, you say, well, wait a minute, what's the right thing to do here? Or, wait a minute, we need to increase access to justice to the public here, things like that. And those kind of things I'll never forget. And that's just the type of leader that he is. So I'm going to thank him for his leadership and for his friendship.
Thank you, Judge. Come on up.
Hi, good morning, Rob Bolden with Health and Human Services. I just.
Are you here as a member of the county leadership? Or as a psychiatrist?
Or maybe, I just heard talk about COVID, maybe we'll quarantine. But just wanted to kind of echo what others have said. But to add in, on behalf of Health and Human Services, just wanted to thank Judge Paneshi for his leadership and friendship over the years. I've been here for, off and on, for a little over 11 years. But I saw Amy Ellis and others, who've been working with Judge Paneshi for even longer, and just his leadership. One thing I will add, the curiosity, and continue, just had a beer with Judge Paneshi. I won't tell stories about that. After hours, that's right. A few weeks ago, and continues to ask questions and really just be curious about our world and Health and Human Services, but also just the respect that he shows. And Judge Paneshi, as you show, and being unassuming during COVID, certainly kept the courts open, but was always, you know, thinking about the safety of the people in the courts as well. And along with Jake, asking lots of really good questions and the curiosity. But I mentioned the sense of humor, and just the collegiality, right? Going out for, you know, getting dinner and talking about tough issues. Appreciate that, talking about decorum, but respecting others with different disciplines. And so really appreciate that legacy that we'll try to continue on. And again, I hope you stay connected to your friends here in Placer County. Thanks, Judge.
Thank you, Rob. Any one else in the public like to make a comment? All right, come on up, Judge.
Thank you, Chairperson Gore. And thank you, each of you, the members of the Board of Supervisors of Placer County, for today, for the commendation and for your kind words. Have an outline. This is difficult, not being in complete control of the proceeding.
I know, that's what's really fun.
Anyway, I want to thank you, but I also want to mention, before I get to the thank yous to the people who spoke as well. This board, and so many previous board members, since 1986 forward, the board that was there when I got appointed was Terry Cook, Eric Hendrickson, Bob Mahan, Mike Lee, and Alex Ferrera. And I, it was a near-unanimous vote of three to two to get me appointed to that job. And I'll forever be appreciative. Thanks to all those board members, not just for that, but over time, in the court system, this board, in different iterations, has really always been supportive of the courts, whether it be Justice Court, Municipal Court, the combined Superior Court. This board has always been supportive, not just supportive verbally, but supportive financially. That building we have in South Placer, the Santucci Justice Center, is a great example. The cooperation we had from your Health and Human Services, always Amy Ellis over many years, but Dr. Rob, Raul, Mike Romero, they were so helpful during that initial, well, throughout COVID, in terms of trying to provide services to the public, trying to have jury trials. We used Sierra College Auditorium, we used Whitney High School, so we could have spacing for selection of jury panels. And we were able to continue with jury trials for people who were in jail and wanted their trial, or people who had civil trials. So I want to thank all those board members and all the work you have done. The last, hopefully not the last, one of the most important and recent efforts that we have been trying. We, when I say our court, the Judicial Council, used to be Administrative Office of Court, AOC, county execs from Don Lunsford to Dan Chatney, right? All of, various members of this board have tried many times since 1989 to have a new courthouse at Tahoe. We have had so many, I've given to so many meetings about that subject. And we are fairly close, I think, well, close in terms of, we hope Jake will be still working for the court when we get that courthouse bill. But it's, it's an example, once again, of this county's cooperation with the state and with our local courts in coming up with a plan to meet that need. And there is certainly, has been a need over a long period of time. So thanks to all of you, thanks to your county exec staff, the present staff, I think Joel, of course, I think it was Amanda. I may be missing someone, your whole staff. I don't like to miss anybody. All of them, not just the criminal justice policy, but you know, the work they do. And over time, the members of that county executive office, again, from Don Lunsford to you. It's all for the public, excuse me, public benefit. And it's just not talk about your caring for your constituents, but it's actually action, and it's money you funded for these projects. And for the Tahoe project, it's going to be also another, hopefully, combined financial project, which will get the job done. I do want to just echo a thank you back to your county departments, your elected leaders. Thank you, Sheriff Wu. Going back to, Don Noons is sheriff, was sheriff when I first started, then Ed Bonner, Devon Bell, and now Sheriff Wu. That also has been a wonderful relationship. They provide not just court security, but they work hard at trying to have everything come into balance in the criminal justice system, which is difficult. But this county, again, has always been sort of at the forefront of realizing with what he said, the sheriff said AB 109, but other proposals, to have not just punishment, but also an aspect of rehabilitation, programming where necessary, where appropriate, and the latest addition to the jail, which again, you get credit for, and the sheriff, and previous sheriffs get credit for, is a great example of how this county is a leader in that effort, in criminal justice, not just finding, you know, ways to incarcerate people, but also to have ways and actually spend money on methods and programs to reduce recidivism. So I do want to thank Judge Penny, Sheriff Wu, Under Sheriff Wright, for being here today, Dr. Rob, and Raul, also from HHS, Amy Ellis, I mentioned. I do want to acknowledge Jake Chatters. He joined us in 2009. He is not only extremely bright, but he is also excellent in terms of his understanding of the importance of relationships between the courts and the executive branch and the legislative branch of this county. He works at that, excuse me, he works at that, and he's done an excellent job. Judge Penny will be an excellent Presiding Judge up next. He's, again, a longtime friend, but he's also an excellent judge. Does not talk as much as I do, it'll be good. But he's very thoughtful, and he has common sense. So anyway, my family, I want to acknowledge them, but you've done that. Anyway, I thank you very much for this commendation, and I appreciate your comments and everyone being here. Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you, Judge Paneshi, really appreciate it. And we have to bring this back to the board for us to approve it. So, let me make a motion.
I would like to proudly move to approve this motion.
All right, we have a motion, a second, all those in favor? Aye. All right, thank you, we'd love to take a photo with you, Judge Paneshi, with the proclamation. Thank you, everyone, for joining us for that. It's always nice to be able to say thank you to our public servants. And we have a few more thank yous later on on our agenda. Next, we have our 9:50 timed item, which is Item 2A. It's an MOU with Placer County Superior Court for Substance Use Disorder Diversion Services Expansion. And we could ask the judge to speak on it if he wanted to, because he's not yet retired, but that's all right. Good morning, Amanda.
Good morning, and I feel like this item is perfectly situated in the agenda in that we just got through talking about the collaboration between the county and the Superior Court and the relationships there. Good morning, Chair Gore, members of your board, Mr. Chatney, Mrs. Schwab. I'm Amanda Flo, Principal Management Analyst from the County Executive Office. Joining me here today is Jake Chatters, Placer County Superior Court Executive Officer, here to answer any questions you may have that I may not be able to answer. And I am here today to request your board approve and authorize the county executive officer to execute an MOU with Placer County Superior Court for Substance Use Disorder Diversion Expansion Services in the amount of $875,000 for the period of December 1st, 2025, through November 30th, 2030, and authorize amendments not to exceed $87,500, subject to risk management in county council concurrence. As many of you are aware, Placer County is a participating county in national lawsuits against manufacturers, distributors, and other entities responsible for aiding the opioid epidemic and is currently receiving funds from several opioid settlements. To date, the county has received $13,880,000. Pursuant to these relevant national opioid settlement agreements, these allocations must be expended on future activities focused on prevention, intervention, harm reduction, treatment, and recovery services in California communities. California has named the Department of Healthcare Services as the oversight and monitoring entity for funds received through these agreements. And California state officials have further agreed on a list of opioid remediation activities to prioritize within the state of California. These priorities are referred to as high abatement activities, and no less than 50% of the funds received by the county should be spent on these activities. One of those includes diversion of people with substance use disorder from the justice system into treatment, included by providing training and resources to first and early responders, and implementing best practices for outreach, diversion, and deflection, employability, restorative justice, and harm reduction. In line with this, staff are working to bolster Placer County Substance Use Disorder Diversion Programs using opioid settlement funds with the increase of five new allocations countywide. There will be two in HHS, one in the District Attorney's Office, one in probation, and one in the courts, which is why we're here today, and that will be a senior clerk position. The Placer County Superior Court operates several collaborative treatment courts that serve criminal justice-involved individuals with both single and co-occurring substance use and mental health challenges or disorders. These treatment-focused courts provide alternatives to incarceration and a focused approach to rehabilitation in efforts to reduce recurrence of substance use and criminality. These courts include a Veterans Treatments Courts, Community Court, Proposition 36 Court, Drug Court, and Mental Health Court. The requested senior clerk position for Placer County Superior Court will provide support for treatment, recovery, and collaborative courts by conducting comprehensive reviews of documents and court case management systems, courtroom minutes, and to ensure completeness of case files, updating training materials to reflect current practices, and routinely reviewing and updating treatment, recovery, and collaborative court protocols. This position will also aid the judicial officers in preparing. This position will also aid the judicial officers in preparing for hearings by updating case data in the court's program tracker on current participants and their program status, and by adding new participants to the case tracker when diversion is granted. The senior clerk will also act as a point of contact for coin-appointed doctors and mental health partners, and serve as a liaison between the court and the judicial council by providing updates and requested statistics on collaborative court program participation, demographics, and graduations and terminations. So as stated earlier, staff are requesting your board approval of a five-year MOU with the Placer County Superior Court for Substance Use Disorder Diversion Expansion Services to fund one court senior clerk in the annual amount of $175,000 for a total amount of $875,000 funded with opioid settlement funding. And with that, I'll open the floor for any questions.
Thank you Amanda, appreciate that, and to me, it's a very good use of those opioid settlement funds. Any questions from my colleagues? All right, seeing none, we will open this up to the public, any comments from the public? All right, we will close public comment and bring it back to the board for, I think, action.
I would like to make a comment first. I just wanted to mention that this divided up over five years, and with the several courts, the different courts that you're going to be serving, I think it's a great deal. It's a wonderful deal, and it's kind of a bargain, so I'm, I'm hoping we're able to stretch it as far as we can, and maybe with future success, we can add to it, I think. These programs are great.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Jones.
And with that, I'll move approval.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Jones, second by Gustafson, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed motion carries, thank you Amanda.
Thank you.
All right, we are going to slowly bring up the sheriff, because we're going to start the 10 a.m. timed item at 10 a.m., and it's 9:59, so as the sheriff's team comes up and gets settled, for our next item, which is Item, Item 3A, it's a five-year agreement with Axon Enterprises Incorporated. And we'll let you get ready, and I'll tell you when you can go, when it becomes, I will do that, I will do that.
In the meantime, how are you doing?
I'm doing well, thank you.
All right, and it's 10 a.m., so good morning gentlemen.
Good morning Madam Chair, members of the board, Karen Daniel, Wayne Wu, your Placer County Sheriff, back again to talk about a five-year contract with Axon. I know we've had a lot of discussions over the years, this is a body-worn camera contract, and it, it really is more than just a body-worn camera contract. I would like to offer a point of clarification, because the conversations come up a couple of times today, though, specifically when it comes to providing public safety revenues to some other jurisdictions. When that was first adopted by the Board of Supervisors, the Placer County Sheriff's Office had been trying to get body-worn cameras for about five years, we'd done the research and development, picked the vendor, and the City of Lincoln Police Department, once they received that money, was able to outfit their officers long before the Sheriff's Office was able to get it across the finish line for the same product. Also, once, in my opinion, what's the current gold standard of equipment came online, the City of Lincoln was able to pivot, and they were the first agency in the county to buy this newer, more expensive technology, obviously long before the Sheriff's Office, in fact, we're the last agency in the county, if this contract gets approved today, that'll be moving forward onto this platform, every other law enforcement jurisdiction currently has it. But like I mentioned, this is more than just a body-worn camera contract, this involves our in-car camera system, how we store digital evidence, and it also enhances our TASER deployment. Currently, we only have about 200 TASERS, not every staff member has a TASER assigned to them, which obviously is key in de-escalation and hopefully minimizing the use of lethal force. So this contract, should it pass, will also expand our TASER deployment. It would also help us interface with the District Attorney's Office, the evidence platform will be the same that the District Attorney and every other police department in the county uses for easy transfer of digital evidence to the District Attorney's Office. So, I, I wouldn't be here today if I didn't think this equipment was extremely important and integral to the continued mission of the Sheriff's Office. And just one point of clarification, because it's kind of unique, and it's really a change in the industry over about the last decade or so, is we have a fund at the Sheriff's Office that's really a capital asset replacement fund, and it's intended for one-time purchases, not ongoing costs. But in the past, we would have come to your board and asked, we want to buy 500 body-worn cameras, and we would have purchased them. Now, most of this technology is, it's a smarter investment to lease it. We were just here last week leasing some radios, same school of thought, previously we would have come, so we're asking to use some of that capital asset replacement fund to offset the cost difference over the next five years. We will earmark the difference and set it aside, and hopefully, depending on the economy, if we can roll the revenues, with additional revenues, roll the costs into our budget, we will, but if not, we will have enough within the Sheriff's Capital Asset Replacement Fund to cover the life of this contract. So with that, thank you for your time this morning, hearing this item and your consideration, and I'll turn it over to Captain Dave Smith.
Good morning everyone, Acting Captain Dave Smith with our Support Services Division, extremely excited to be here to present Axon to all of you. First thing I want to speak about is our current limitations with our WatchGuard Motorola system. Lesser video quality, which I'll get into in terms of how Axon really does change that, does not integrate with our current other systems, falling behind in technology and what we're capable of doing with Motorola, challenging to store and share digital evidence, I'll get into how deputies go about doing that now, as opposed to how they will do that with Axon, which is a game changer in terms of time savings and getting deputies back out on the street, and then hardware challenges with our body-worn cameras, in-car cameras, and evidence documentation communicating with one another. So that is Motorola as it stands now. And what are the benefits of Axon, which is where we are asking to go? Really, it's in the power of the suite of services that we're getting. As you, as you all know, we're asking for body-worn cameras, in-car cameras, TASERS, evidence.com, and Draft One is all included as part of this package deal. It also includes FUSIS, which we're already utilizing. Increased video and audio quality, I'll turn your attention to the picture that's on this slide to really demonstrate the availability of that. On the left, you see a picture of the same corridor, how dark it is and how difficult and challenging it is to see what's going on in that corridor. On the right, you have Axon Body 3, which is a lesser version than what we would be getting with this package, so you can imagine the quality will be even greater than this. But as you can see, there's a subject on the left-hand side, and what it comes down to litigation and how we handle things, it's not just what the officer's able to testify to, but it's what is seen on body-worn camera nowadays that makes a tremendous difference in how we go about litigating different complaints and things of that nature. So you can see, if action was taken against this individual in the left side, we would have no idea if that person was armed, and we'd have to take the officer's word for it. In the right, we can verify what it is the officer's saying with the body-worn. Cutting-edge technology that increases the capability of all of our field operations and correctional staff, this is all encompassing and impacts the entire agency. This upgrade also has the ability to highly reduce the potential of litigation and complaints, which I just spoke to with the clarity of the photos. And then the bundled package deal includes over $3 million in savings over the length of the contract, and $700,000 a year, which is why we're asking for it in a package deal. What are we getting in this package? 500 body-worn cameras, a few points that are really important about this is voice prompts and haptics. We have the ability to not only tell the officer whether or not the camera's on, or whether or not the battery is low, but say the officer goes down, and we can't raise them on the radio, dispatch can activate their body-worn camera for audio only, see if they hear any response, see if they get any kind of feedback from the officer, and in fact, there's a story where an officer had a medical emergency, they did this, and they were able to get help to that officer immediately, so you can see the value in that. Real-time language translation. Axon offers over 50 different languages to be translated in real time. That doesn't mean a button has to be pushed, if they're interacting with a subject, and that subject's speaking a different language than English, the body-worn camera will recognize that and automatically start translating that for the officer, and then in turn, when the officer speaks, it'll start translating it back for the person, so incredibly impressive technology. 400 TASERS. De-escalation is an incredibly important thing in law enforcement, and TASERS are one of our tools that help us to do that. This TASER transitions away from a 27-foot standoff to a 45-foot standoff, meaning I can interact with a dangerous subject from farther away, giving me more time to react to what, what it is that subject's doing. Not only that, but there's 10 individually-targeted probes, right now, we have probes that come out two at a time, and then that TASER's spent, and we have to move on to a different tool if it's not effective. This shoots 10 individual probes that can be aimed in different areas and hopefully achieve the desired result, which would be not a lethal use of force, but a less lethal use of force that'll allow us to take that subject into custody. And then 132 in-car cameras. One of the amazing things about this is not only the in-car camera, but also the body-worn camera utilizes GPS tracking technology that helps us to identify where the officer's location is. Right now, we're trying to make a decision of whether or not we should track the car, or whether or not we should track the computer, and that's the only ability we have to track the officer's location right now. That conversation goes out the window when we are able to obtain this technology. And if the officer gets in a foot pursuit away from his car and is running through rural woods out in the middle of nowhere, and we lose track of him, we can automatically identify where he's at with his body-worn camera system, greatly increasing our officer's safety when it comes to deputies operating on the street. And then all of this integrates into the AI-ready evidence.com platform, which we'll talk about next. Axon Evidence is a central hub that kind of ties all of this together and makes it all capable. It's centralized digital evidence, automatic upload organization. To explain that appropriately, a deputy goes into the station, plugs his phone in, downloads it on a computer, then puts that evidence on a CD, then does all the paperwork in order to mark that up, sends it off, and if DA's office, for instance, wants that evidence, they then have to go through a lengthy request process with our evidence unit before they get it. Now, I take my phone, I'm on a scene, I take a picture of evidence, I hit upload, it's automatically uploaded to our evidence.com software, where it's then maintained, the DA's office then wants that, all we have to do is send it over to the DA's office through the evidence.com platform, which they already have, which makes the, the seamlessness and the ability to keep deputies out on the street is what it really improves. Integrated redaction tools, we spend thousands of hours right now redacting PRAs and things of that nature, video requests, the AI system that's offered in Axon will help us reduce those hours substantially, because it can automatically detect things that shouldn't be sent out and redact it for us. And then Draft One. Draft One is an AI report-writing platform, now it does not write our reports for us, I don't want anybody to get that confused, but what it does is an individual makes a traffic stop, they're interacting with that subject, then it has to be turned into a report. That entire conversation that was had, that was recorded by body-worn camera, is now automatically dictated professionally, as well as any detective or any deputy could, onto a report, and all those hours that the deputy would have to go back and review that is then saved and allows them to be back on the street. And that goes for investigations, interview cameras that are being utilized in our current station right now will all function under that. And when you include FUSIS, Axon Evidence, TASERS, body-worn cameras, ICC, what it does is it really takes the idea of a real-time crime center and puts it at the fingertips of every deputy on the street. More information, faster use of information, more times of deputies being out on the street, interacting with the public, enforcing the laws, and less time spent report writing, which is somewhere in the neighborhoods of 40% of time spent right now is spent report writing. So, the goal with this is to drastically reduce that and improve our capabilities across the board when it comes to how we interact with not only body-worn cameras, but evidence, other camera systems throughout the county. What is the action requested? Number one, we would ask that the board approves an agreement with Axon Enterprise Incorporated in the amount of $9,683,755.71 for a five-year term for the purchase of body-worn cameras, in-car cameras, TASERS, FUSIS, and additional software, storage, and accessories. Number two, approve fiscal year 2025 through 26 budget amendment number AM-01238 in the amount of $1 million to fund the first year of the agreement by increasing appropriations in the sheriff's budget with a corresponding cancellation of reserves in the Public Safety Fund. Number three, authorize the purchasing manager to sign the agreement and all required documents with risk management and county council concurrence. Number four, authorize the purchasing manager to execute amendments in the maximum amount of $100,000 and to sign all required documents consistent with the subject matter and scope of work with risk management and county council concurrence. What is the fiscal impact? The total cost of the five-year agreement is $9,683,755.71. The first-year payment of $1,838,770.46, funding in the amount of $838,770.46 is currently available in the fiscal year 2025-26 Sheriff Administration Budget. A budget amendment, which is AM-01238, to increase appropriations by $1 million in the fiscal year 2025 through 26 budget for Sheriff Administration, offset by a corresponding cancellation of Public Safety Fund reserves, is included for consideration and approval. Subsequent year funding will be included in future recommendation budgets over the term of the agreement. The Sheriff's Office will evaluate options to manage future costs within available resources, and the use of reserves may be considered if other funding is not identified. There is no additional impact to the general fund and a $1 million impact to the Public Safety Fund. Thank you for your time, I want to also acknowledge the fact that Axon has sent representatives here to help answer any questions that we might have, I think that's a testament to the type of company that they are. And with that, I will open it up for questions.
Thank you very much, appreciate that report and that overview of the software and et cetera, quite frankly, fascinating what AI can do to make jobs a little bit easier. Let's see, Supervisor Landon, questions?
Thanks, I don't have any questions, I just wanted to say, first of all, you're a really great salesman, so maybe alternative job in the future, you did a really good job selling it. I think, aside from the, the cost savings over time, I think, one of the bullet points on one of your slides was about the, the reduce, reducing litigation, and, and I just think with everything that's going on in the county and the amount of PRAs and things that we get, especially your office, this just seems like such a great opportunity to, to do, to be able to do better for the community and to be able to quickly provide evidence when needed, and so I'm fully supportive, I think it's, it's a great next step for you guys, and hopefully we'll give you the tools that you need to, to keep our streets safe, so thank you.
We appreciate that.
Thank you Supervisor Jones?
Yes, thank you for the presentation, that was excellent. Again, I put my pen to paper, and I think the cost, the value for what we're getting is amazing. These programs, especially after what you went over, I think the value in saving time in all of your reporting and the transcriptions and all those things, the less time you have to spend doing that is more time you're going to be out on the, on the streets protecting all of us, as well as some of the other items that you mentioned, for the safety of the officers, I think, you know, when an officer's down and the things that it will do for you there, the translation and foreign languages, I mean, I see it saving lives, not only yours, but also for the public as well. I think it's amazing, the programs sound amazing to me, and I'm wholly, wholly supportive of this for your safety and for, for the good, everything it's going to do for you and your department.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Jones. All right, I will open this up to the public for any questions from the public on this item. All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for any other further conversation or action.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion by Jones, second by Demeté, and this is a roll-call vote, please.
Demeté?
Yes.
Jones?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Landon?
Yes.
Gore?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you very much gentlemen, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Next we have our 10:15 timed item, which is for a, it's a commendation honoring California Highway Patrol Officer Chris Kelly. So we will let them walk out and ask our folks from the CHP to come on in. They're shaking hands, right, because they're all friends and they work together, so you gotta give them a chance to say hello. All right gentlemen, come on in, and if we can have Officer Kelly come closer, that would be great. Good morning, nice to see you this morning on this beautiful day of soon retirement.
Yes, it's coming around the corner pretty quick.
Wonderful, well, we do have a commendation, I'm going to ask Supervisor Gustafson to read it aloud.
Before I start, thank you Officer Kelly for being here, and I think with you, we have Sergeant Mark McNabb and Mike Hamilton, the Public Information Officer. Typically, none of us like to see CHP in our, I guess in our rearview mirror is typically it, but I've got to say, the commendation has a lot of your accomplishments. it, but I've got to say, the commendation has a lot of your accomplishments, many of which I didn't know. But why we started this out today was his incredible dedication to attending, he's attended more MAC meetings than any of my staff or any of the county's staff.
Yes.
And reported to our communities. But when you hear of his accomplishments throughout his career, to imagine that he's taken the time to deal with some of the issues we ask him to deal with, it's pretty amazing. Anyway, so I'll read the commendation. I think we've captured it all. "In the matter of a commendation honoring California Highway Patrol Officer Chris Kelly for 27 years of dedicated public service. Whereas Officer Chris Kelly is retiring from the California Highway Patrol after dutifully serving the agency and the citizens of California for 27 years. And whereas in 1999, Officer Kelly graduated from the California Highway Patrol Academy and was assigned to the East Los Angeles Area Office." You've come a long way.
Yeah.
Did better, yes. "He worked primarily patrol, trained new officers in the field, and was assigned to the State's Protective Service Detail, providing protection and escorts to foreign and domestic dignitaries and heads of state. And whereas in 2006, Officer Kelly transferred to the North Sacramento Area Office, where he completed a 16-year tour, working patrol and serving on the State's Special Response Team, which deployed to areas impacted by natural disasters and civil unrest across the state. And whereas he began serving on the North Sacramento Area's Problem Oriented Policing POP team, working with the Sacramento County Sheriff's Office and the Sacramento Police Department to combat complex issues plaguing the county. And whereas in 2021, after transferring to the Auburn Area Office in Newcastle, Officer Kelly forged strong working relationships with a variety of stakeholders, local area schools, key contacts, community members, and public safety allied agencies to seek broad-based solutions to increase the safety and quality of life of Placer County residents and its visitors. And whereas in his capacity as the sole POP officer for the South Placer County region, Officer Kelly was responsible for addressing a variety of community-based public safety issues and concerns, including the unhoused population on or about state property and the abatement program addressing abandoned vehicles, RVs, boats, and trailers left across unincorporated Placer County. And whereas Officer Kelly has also been a strong advocate for increased brake checks and truck driver education along Interstate 80, recognizing the importance of keeping motorists and mountain communities safe on one of California's most challenging highway corridors. And whereas Officer Kelly has frequently represented the California Highway Patrol Auburn Area in community forums, educational events and presentations, and interactions with Placer County District Supervisors. And whereas we would be remiss if we did not also commend Officer Kelly for his patience and humor in handling some of our more unique community challenges, from spirited debates at the Forest Hill Forum over dirt bikes using the trails and racing across driveways, to the ongoing adventure of convincing middle and high school students that stop signs are more than just suggestions. He has navigated it all with professionalism, diplomacy, and a smile. And whereas Officer Kelly and his wife, who reside in the Weimar area, look forward to visiting their children around the country during retirement. And whereas the Placer County Board of Supervisors acknowledges Officer Kelly has proven to be a committed and selfless public servant, highly dedicated to the CHP's core mission of safety, service, and security. Now therefore, let it be known that the above commendation was duly passed by the Board of Supervisors at our regular meeting today." Anyway, that is just a long legacy of incredible service to our state and to our community. We failed to mention that one of our first meetings, we were talking about the resurfacing of I-80.
Oh, yeah.
And now that I realize where you live, I understand why that was something of interest to you.
Lost a few windshields.
Yes, between windshields and tires and some of, he really helped us in our discussions with Caltrans on resurfacing that road, on the safety checks, and as I mentioned, all the various, I think you've been to Donner Summit MAC, Forest Hill Forum many, many times, North Auburn, WAC MAC, our Weimar, Applegate, Colfax MAC, Meadow Vista MAC, and of course, Newcastle. So, he has many times attended those meetings and answering questions of the public, educating us all, and always doing it with such decorum, as we talked about earlier, patient, diplomatic, and very appropriate to the various environments that you're working in. So, thank you, Officer Kelly.
Well, thank you. I will say, I appreciate the acknowledgement, and it's been a privilege and an honor to serve Placer County. The support I've gotten from the county and all the allied agencies and all the entities within Placer County is second to none from the other counties I've worked in. So, I just appreciate everyone's support and supporting me in my projects as well as the Highway Patrol. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to see if anyone else has a comment. Supervisor Jones?
Yeah. I'd like to make a comment. I want to thank you for serving the MACs because your counterparts down in Granite Bay have always been very good to Granite Bay, and they do attend all of our MACs. My people bring statistics on accidents and all that kind of good stuff.
Yes, he does too. He always reports.
That's the worst part, yeah. That's the hardest part.
I know. That's where they really, really love it, when you look out after them. And I just want to say how much I appreciate the fact that you're doing that for the MAC up in your area, because we really, really appreciate those who are doing it in the MAC in my area.
Well, thank you. It's a pleasure.
Thank you for your service too, dedication.
Thank you, Supervisor Jones. And I will share, I really appreciate your efforts. I only have one MAC, but lots of concerns when you have areas where there's more traffic than there used to be. We've had lots of challenges off on PFE Road, and we're looking back, and you have been really responsive to our residents and working with us to figure out ways to slow things down out there, and just really appreciate your responsiveness. So, whoever it is that's replacing you, and we've met some of your folks, there we go. I think, you know, it's just so important, right? Because residents just don't know, and being able to have someone they can reach out to when that phone number is available that they can reach out to and having someone follow up, it makes all the difference in the world. People just want to be heard, and their concerns they want to have heard, and you've done that so well. It's really, really appreciated, and so I'm glad you've got folks that you've trained who are doing the same thing and really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Let me do this, I want to open this up to the public in case anybody in the public would like to make a comment. All right, and seeing none, bring it back to our Board, and from a motion from my colleagues.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this commendation.
And I'll second.
Wonderful. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Well, thank you so much. I think we deserve an applause as we come down. And we'll come down and take a photo with you if we can.
Absolutely.
Sure, do you want to stand in the mellow?
I'll stand on the other side.
Okay.
Okay.
And this works great.
Wonderful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Enjoy the travel.
Thank you very much. Enjoy.
You're welcome.
I'll help pick up.
I'll give you a cell phone.
Okay, I need a cell phone as well.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll see you there.
Good seeing you.
You've got my hearing.
Yes, we're good.
Thank you.
You know, I forgot to mention, Officer Kelly, just the coordination earlier, we've talked a lot today about our public safety investments, and our partnership with CHP is so valued by all of us, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Supervisor Gustafson. Wonderful. We are going to move to item 5A, which is a commendation of Ralph Gibson, our Museums Administrator, which is wonderful and bittersweet all at the same time. And we've asked Supervisor Jones to read the commendation.
I want to thank you for your service in advance.
Oh, microphone. There we go.
Extremely valuable to all of us. So, "In the matter of a commendation recognizing Ralph Gibson for 21 years of public service dedicated to preserving and sharing Placer County's rich heritage. Whereas Placer County is a region of exceptional historical significance, where a system of public museums was first established in 1948 to preserve and share the county's rich history. And whereas the Placer County Museums Division has eight museums that tell the colorful history of Placer County and its people. And whereas the Placer County Museums Administrator Ralph Gibson is retiring after 21 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Placer County. And whereas Ralph began his career with Placer County in 2004 as curator of education, was promoted to Programs Manager in 2005, and rose to the position of Museums Administrator in 2013. And whereas throughout his career, Ralph has demonstrated unwavering commitment to public service and to the stewardship of local heritage, significantly expanding access to Placer County's history through the expansion of the Heritage Trail Summer Event Series and the development of two new museums, the DeWitt History Museum and the Fruitvale Schoolhouse Museum. Whereas Ralph has worked many late nights and weekends to support the mission and programming of Placer County museums. And whereas Ralph's leadership has left an enduring mark on Placer County's cultural landscape, ensuring the preservation of its history for future generations through his vision, dedication, and exemplary public service. And whereas the Placer County Board of Supervisors recognizes Ralph Gibson's commitment to preserving the rich history of Placer County and wishes him the best in his retirement. Now therefore, let it be known that the above commendation was duly passed by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Placer at a regular meeting held today on behalf of the citizens of Placer County. We'd like to thank you so much for all those years and for the accomplishments that you've made for us."
Absolutely.
Would you like to please come forward? We want to have you come forward and...
Will you come forward, and then, any of my colleagues want to make some additional comments? Supervisor Gustafson?
Absolutely. You know, I can't remember where I was recently, and it's been bothering me all morning. That's how things go, but we saw some photos on the wall at this location, and I was told, oh, that's from the Museums Department, they found those historic photos. And I think about the incredible history we have here in Placer County, and I just want to thank you for your dedication and service and commitment to preserving that legacy for our future. It's so important to tell those stories and to remind us all where we came from, and maybe that helps guide us to where we should go. So, thank you, Ralph, for your commitment.
Thank you, Supervisor Gustafson. Supervisor Landon?
We just remembered it was the crop report.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Thank you for reminding me.
Yeah. Well, I just want to say thank you so much. You have been such a pleasure to work with, and you're just so passionate about your work, and I love that. I just adore you as a person. I just think you exude this joy in your work, and I think are such an example to other people throughout the county of just really loving what you do and then letting that spread to other people. And so, I just want to say thank you, and I love the theme tie, and that just, again, speaks to who you are as a person. And it will just not be the same without you and museums. So, I hope that whoever your successor is comes in with as much passion and excitement for the job as you do.
Thank you, Supervisor Landon. Supervisor Demeté?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you, Ralph, and again, thank you for those pictures in the crop report. It brought some good memories for myself as a longtime farmer, so thank you.
And I would just like to say how much I appreciate all the work you have done over these many years. I've had a chance to, I think really because when I came to the county, I was like, oh, I need to start going to the museums. And I've so enjoyed learning more about our history, and you've had just your thumbprints on all of it. And I really appreciate as well just how hard you've worked to have this great volunteer group of folks who are docents, who are volunteering in all the museums, and they are what makes history come alive. But because of you and your team really encouraging them and doing recognition events, and that has them come back year after year after year, and we're just so fortunate. So, thank you for all you've done for preserving history in our community. I mean, it's a wonderful history. It's got its goods and its bads, and can I tell you, I love your newsletters and even our county newsletters that come out with that little bit of history. I'm like, that is so cool, who knew? Right? So, let's keep doing that, because I think it just, it reminds us of how far we've come as a community and things that we can value from the past. So, thank you. Um, Supervisor Jones, did you want to say anything else?
I just wanted to add one thing. In our newsletters, when they come out, I usually skip to the end because I find that the most interesting, the history that you include about Placer County, especially going way back, it's great.
Thank you. I would like to open this up to the public. Anyone in the public, come on up, Brad. Love to have you all come up and make a comment. We're not letting you get out of the hot seat there.
Good morning, Mr. Gore.
Board members, Daniel and Karen. I'm Brad Boullet, Deputy Director with the Department of General Services. It is my pleasure to be here with Ralph to recognize his career contributions and pending retirement. First, I have a question. What do you call a person who is happy on a Monday?
Ralph.
Well, retired Ralph.
Retired.
I would venture to guess that Mondays will be Ralph's new favorite day of the week. It has been a pleasure to work with Ralph as his direct supervisor. I have always told him, you make my job easy. For example, I asked Ralph to track some key performance indicators such as museums attendance, schools attending living history, museum donations, Heritage Trail attendance. Well, over a five-year period under Ralph's leadership, all categories have reached historic highs. Another example just recently was the record turnout for the Old Auburn Cemetery Tour with 908 people in attendance.
That's great.
Yes. Ralph leaves a legacy of public service. His dedication and enthusiasm for the job are infectious. Ralph led by example as the Museums Administrator through expansion of the Placer County Museum programs, endless weekend work, and Hawaiian shirt collection. Often, Ralph, when you think you're at the end of something like your career, you're really at the beginning of something else. Retirement is not the end of the road, it's the beginning of the open highway. Ralph, you will be missed, but not forgotten. Congratulations on your retirement, dedication to public service, and lasting legacy.
Thank you, Brad. Can I see another, come on up, Jake.
Good morning. I'm Jake Chatters, the Executive Officer at the Placer County Superior Court. Thank you, Supervisor Gore and board members. It might be unusual having the court executive come talk about the museum administrator's retirement, but we, of course, share a building, so our lovely historic courthouse. You know, Ralph occupies quite largely on the first floor, welcoming people into the building while we have our courtrooms up above. And I can say it has been nothing but a wonderful experience working with him over 11, 12, whatever years there are at this point. Always welcome to ideas. He is always happy at his job, and I can say, I don't think there's a single meeting, Ralph, I ever went to meet with you where I didn't leave happier than when I walked in. I think it's been said well by all of you, your spirit is infectious. You love the history that you bring forward. You remind us that the work we do and the county and community we support will be here long after any of us, and someone will tell some of the most random stories, and it won't be, you know, we may not remember the details, but they'll follow. And something that Ralph does for me all the time is I'll come with him, somebody wants to do something at the historic courthouse, and oh, this is, the scales are our current effort. And, well, can we restore the scales up there on Lady Liberty? Because they're gone, you know, we should restore them. And Ralph shared with me, and I'm going to get this not quite right, so he'll remember, but they lasted something like a year originally. So, we think that, well, they're missing. Well, they really have been gone far longer than they were there. And you get those little tidbits whenever you talk to Ralph. And so, I'm going to miss you. I think it has been a great relationship. I think we have been so lucky to have you as part of... long after any of us and someone will tell some of the most random stories and it won't be, you know, we may not remember the details, but they'll follow. And something that Ralph does for me all the time is I'll come with him, somebody wants to do something at the historic courthouse and oh, this is, the scales are our current effort. And well, can we restore the scales up there on Lady Liberty because they're gone? We should restore them. And Ralph shared with me, and I'm going to get this not quite right, so he'll remember, but they lasted something like a year originally. So, we think that, well, they're missing. Well, they really have been gone far longer than they were there. And you get those little tidbits whenever you talk to Ralph. And so, I'm going to miss you. I think it has been a great relationship. I think we have been so lucky to have you as part of our museum and you really do make everybody's life brighter. So, hopefully you're not a stranger and we get to see you around. So, thank you Ralph.
Thank you Jake very much. Appreciate those comments. Come on up Steve.
Good morning. Steve Newsom with General Services. And Ralph, congratulations. It's been just a pleasure working with you. You have always been upbeat, very easy to access. I always send messages to you, hey, what's the history of this or what is that? And you're just right there giving me the background on things and it helps me quite a bit. And I agree with everything everyone's said so far. So, we're really happy for you. We're going to miss you. We're going to miss your knowledge, your passion for history. And when I think of great places that people want to visit, it's, you know, more urban places that people want to visit, it's usually the architecture and the history that they go to see, you know? Paris, New York, Rome, wherever it is, Auburn. And your dedication to it, your enthusiasm to it is very contagious. So, I really appreciate that and I want to just congratulate you and we'll miss you.
Thank you Steve. Anyone else in the chambers? All right. We will give you an opportunity to say anything Ralph. Come on up.
Well, first, thank you so much. Really, it's kind of, it's sort of surreal, but I would say that any success our museums division has had since my tenure here is really due to our excellent staff, very dedicated to what they do, and our wonderful volunteers who are out there, our first-line people meeting with the public. And of course, the great support that we get from you, our Board of Supervisors on down to our great department led by Steve and Brad and Paul and every other division manager and all the employees. And I've had the pleasure of working with just about every single division department within the county collaborating on some kind of project, even from a small little exhibit here and there to bigger projects. And of course, working with the courts. Jake is here. We've, in fact, we're collaborating on an exhibit right now. So, I've had a wonderful experience working here. Placer County is a great place to work, great place to live, and a great place to play. And I will miss it. So, thank you.
Thank you very much Ralph. And don't sit down just yet, so I'll bring it back to our board for action.
I move approval.
And I'll second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed motion, no, of course we're not opposed. Motion carries. All right. Thank you. Let's come on down and we'll present the proclamation. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Timing is pretty good today. I like that. I cannot completely take credit, but we are going to our item 6A, which is the Opal Lee Preservation Quilt Project. And joining us is Tawana Armstrong. She oversees a local nonprofit called See My Child. And she's going to present to us this morning. Good morning, Tawana.
Good morning. Thank you Chair Gore and members of the day. Thank you so much for entertaining me this morning. So, I am going to talk to you about a project that See My Child did this past, we're celebrating five years. This past June, we celebrated with the Perseverance Quilt Project and indulged me as I checked my notes, not as young as I used to be. So, the Perseverance, Perseverance Quilt Project pays homage to Opal Lee. She's affectionately known as the grandmother of Juneteenth. She is widely known for her tireless efforts in advocating for the recognition of Juneteenth as a federal holiday. Her activism included a symbolic walk 1,400 miles from Fort Worth, Texas to Washington, DC to help raise awareness, which ultimately led to the establishment of Juneteenth as a national holiday in 2021. She's a retired teacher and counselor. She, in 2016, at the age of 89, she began a series of walks. So, every year on the holiday, she walks 2.5 miles symbolizing, symbolizing the two and a half years it took for the news to reach Galveston, Texas. So, in June of 2027, Senate Bill, Senate Bill 475 was signed, making Juneteenth the 11th federal holiday. And in 2024, she was awarded the Presidential Medal of Freedom, the nation's highest civilian honor. She is founder of the National Juneteenth Museum and at the ripe, young age of 98, she continues to be sought after on the speaking cir-, speaking circuit. So, I want, I do want to quote her and share with you some of the spunkiness that you can get from Ms. Lee. So, she says, and I quote, "When he calls me, I don't plan to be in no rocking chair waiting for him. Too much work to be done." Close quote. So, I'm standing before you today, asking, enticing, hoping that you'll join me in this Perseverance Quilt Project. So, what is, what am I asking? So, for the celebration, we asked all of those who joined us on that day to participate by signing or inscribing a square with your family name, any quote that you may want to have. And thank you Supervisor Gore, you did join us and you did sign a square. So, I appreciate it very, very much. So, the completed quilt will be presented, I'm hoping to donate it, to Placer County. I'm in conversation with Rockland Historical Museum for them to store it. But I'm asking you, if you would please, as members of Placer County far and wide, please join us in inscribing a square so that we can keep this as part of this mosaic diversity that we have here in Placer County. So, yes. So, hopefully you'll indulge me. I do have squares. I can leave them with you today. Happy to come back and pick them up. And I'm hoping that others, as they hear about the project, will join us. It's going to take about six months to a year. So, I plan to be back before you in about a year with the completed quilt. So, that's my offering today. Thank you again for indulging me and ready to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much, Tawana. And I first want to say thank you for your efforts in establishing the MLK Walk in Placer County, the Juneteenth Celebration. I've come the last two years and this last year was a great success and you've really incorporated local artists and musicians and it's just a really wonderful time. And if we think about it, right, the fact that slavery ended after the Civil War and we've had our challenges as a country, but to be able to recognize that as a community is so important. So, I have a question, which is, I know you'll leave a couple of the squares for my colleagues to sign. If folks want to participate in the quilt, how else can they get one of the little squares to participate or what other opportunities are there?
Absolutely, absolutely. Of course, reach out to me. See My Child, there's the email address, seemychild@gmail.com. I'll respond. I'm willing to go anywhere. I've got some students that will also help out. Extending an invitation, we'll also have the project available at this year's MLK March, January 19th in Rockland at Johnson Spring View Park. So, please join me. A personal invitation to each one of you to join me. So, yes, just reach out to me. Again, more than happy to meet you with the squares, the MLK March. They'll be available as well.
Super, thank you. Any questions for my colleagues? All right, we'll open this up to the public for any questions or comments from the public. All right. And then it looks like now the lights are coming up. So, Supervisor Gustafson?
I just want, you're leaving some squares with us. Okay, perfect.
I have them in my, in a package.
And thanks for all your efforts on this. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Supervisor Jones?
I just wanted to mention that Ms. Opal Lee sounds like quite a character. It's too bad you couldn't bring us a little videotape of her.
Yes, I will. I will. When we do the presentation, thank you for that.
For us to be able to enjoy her as well. And thank you for bringing this to us.
Yes, thank you.
Much appreciated.
Thank you, Tawana. And if you want to just leave the items with the clerk before you go, that would be great and we'll make sure we do that. And I'm happy to get them to her. I see Tawana fairly regularly in the community.
Thank you guys for your time today.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Let's see. Yes, so we are not yet ready for our next timed items. So, we're going to take the department item, Amy Ellis, which is the HHS one and I'm looking for it.
11A.
11A. We're going to take Amy first. So, 11A, which is the Application for Behavioral Health Continuum Infrastructure Program Funding Bond Act of 2024. And she's making her way from the staff room, so she will, there's, she's on her way, I think.
Yes.
And if not, we'll go to the library. Give us a moment. That's all right. What's that?
The supplemental.
No, that's, but that's, oh.
That might be.
If not, then we can take Shawna Howard. But, no, there she is. Sorry, maybe we just caught you unawares.
I, yeah, so sorry. I thought I was the next, okay. Anyway, I'm here.
Well, good morning. And you look great, by the way. Nice to see you.
Thanks. Okay, Amy Ellis here. Good mor-, well, I'll start from the beginning. Good morning, Chair Gore and members of the board. I am Amy Ellis, the Director of the Adult System of Care, and I am here to request approval on three action items today. The first, to adopt a resolution authorizing the Director of Health and Human Services to submit a grant application to the California Department of Healthcare Services Behavioral Health Continuum Infrastructure Program, which is a long way to say B-CHIP, Round Two, for a site at the Placer County Government Center in an amount not to exceed $16 million with a county match of 10% of the final award amount, and authorize the Director of Health and Human Services or designate a sign the resulting agreement and all related paperwork with risk management and county council concurrence. Second, authorize the County Executive Officer and Division Director of the Adult System of Care, acting as Behavioral Health Director, to submit letters of support on behalf of Placer County to be included with the Behavioral Health Continuum Infrastructure Program Grant Application. And third, to make a finding that the requested grant application and letter of support are each not a project pursuant to CEQA Guidelines Section 15378B4. And if awarded, subsequent contract actions are exempt from California Environmental Quality Act review pursuant to CEQA Guidelines Section 15301. So, as your board is aware, ASAC has applied for nearly every round of these B-CHIP funds that have been coming out from the state. This is how we have funded our new harbor, SUD Recovery Residence, the psychiatric health facility, a youth urgent care center, and a new 44-bed substance use residential facility that will be coming on in the next few years. This bond B-CHIP Round Two, we, is the unmet needs round, and we believe it's the last and final opportunity for infrastructure funding. And they are, and, and these funds are designed to meet outstanding behavioral health needs or insufficient behavioral health infrastructure project needs. So, funding is reserved for projects that will invest in the infrastructure needed to address historic gaps in the state's behavioral health continuum and meet the growing demand for services and support across the lifespan. Placer County is requesting funds to renovate an existing building within the Placer County Government Center Campus and will allow for long-term operations of the Transitional Housing Casa de Wit program and expand what has been a successful program. The grant includes a 10% match requirement, which will be primarily met through in-kind contribution based on the land valuation, and the remaining match will be funded through opioid settlement funds. Once renovations are complete, operation of the facility will be contracted to a community-based organization, which will be selected through a competitive RFP process. Funds for the B-CHIP Bond Round Two, if awarded, would provide infrastructure dollars to design and repurpose the building on the Placer County Government Center Campus in Auburn, which is near existing HHS services and would expand capacity at the Casa de Wit program from 18 beds, which in its current location, which is just down the road from the new location. In the new location, it would increase to approximately 36 beds. So, this would simply move an existing program that's just three buildings away into this new expanded and permanent location. HHS believes the additional beds will offer a safe, structured environment for clients who are immediately after discharged from residential treatment, inpatient settings, custody settings, and expand options for sheltered or unsheltered homeless. The program will offer a recovery-focused environment where participants can strengthen recovery skills, develop housing readiness, secure income, and pursue permanent supportive housing, housing vouchers, or independent housing opportunities. It also provides the necessary time for individuals to stabilize their behavioral health symptoms, increase their income, and prepare for independent living. Program participant stays range from an initial 90 days or up to 24 months for those requiring additional support. The program has been very successful, supporting over 80% of the life of this program as it currently exists, over 80% of the participants have entered long-term housing solutions. Of those 80%, 95 of them have maintained their housing at six months. At a recent meeting where we got all of our housing operation together to talk about issues related to Placer County, we talked about this project and there was a quote from one of the housing operators. They said, "We love taking people who've been at Casa de Wit. They are well-prepared for housing and are great tenants." What is impressive about this is that the individuals that are selected into Casa de Wit, they've been previously declined or been struggling to find housing. These are the hardest to house individuals. And so, after they have done with Casa de Wit, then they are preferred people for people to want to house. So, I do also want to mention that this final round of funding is being prioritized for areas that have yet to receive B-CHIP funding, which is not us, and for facility types that are licensed as treatment facilities, which this one wouldn't be. So, there are some things against us in this application round, making us, you know, not necessarily a high likely candidate for award, but it's still worth it. This is determined, we have received so many other prior rounds that have met all of our top priorities when we did a needs assessment on what are we lacking, where are our gaps? We have filled all those highest needs. This one now is at the top of our unmet needs and we figured even if we don't have like a really high chance of getting this grant, it's still worth a shot. So, that's what we're doing. We're going to apply and hope for the best. The estimated grant award would be, you know, approximately $16 million. And that, like I said before, that match would be through the value of the property and then a small portion, probably around $200,000 to $300,000 of opioid settlement funded, funding. And then if awarded, we'll come back to your board with a budget amendment for the revenue, county match, and related expenditures, and there's no impact to general fund. Happy to answer any questions on this.
Thank you, Amy. Appreciate that. I have a couple of questions and so I appreciate this. If awarded, where do the operational funds come from to make sure this program does all it needs to do?
Yeah, so, right now, because we already operate a smaller portion, those operational funds mostly come out of MHSA funding. So, as we expand it, we'll look to, you know, increase the MHSA dollars, but we'll probably also seek out additional grant-type fundings to, you know, because we always like to preserve our MHSA for new projects and other things. So, we'll, we'll bill whatever we can to Medi-Cal because some of the services provided on-site are billable. So, we'll get revenue that way. We'll use MHSA and then we'll seek out additional grants.
Thank you. And this is primarily transitional housing, right? What we would call transitional housing. And, which I really appreciate because there is a need. And when I was meeting with the city of Roseville a couple of weeks ago, one of the gaps they indicated that the city has is there is no transitional housing. Like, in Roseville, there's no transitional housing. Like, in Roseville, there's no transitional housing. So taking people from a behavioral health program, and they finish their program, there's really no place for them to go. Or if they're ready to get off the streets, there is no place for them to go, because we don't have any stable emergency shelter or navigation center and no transitional housing, which I thought was really important or informative, that there is no transitional housing. We have transitional housing up in North Auburn, correct?
Yes.
A number of beds, but none in South Placer. And I share that, because there's a need. And one of the conversations we've had about addressing the issues of folks who've been on the streets is that people don't necessarily, people live in their communities, and all the transitional housing and emergency shelters should not necessarily be in North Auburn when we've got a couple of hundred unsheltered people in the city of Roseville alone. We shouldn't expect all of the services to be up in North Auburn. So I, I share that, because it was important that the city saw that there was a gap, and I think this, this is a good opportunity, but I also think we should be looking at opportunities in other parts of the county, because that's where the residents live as well. So just something for us to think about in the future. Any other questions, comments? Supervisor Gustafson?
I just agree with your comments. I think that all the evidence is the closer people are to where they are from, the more success they're likely to have. And so I think it's so important that we try to locate people close to where they might have friends, colleagues, family, work, previous employers, all of those things come into play with getting people back into a productive situation. And so I agree with you on looking, continuing our efforts in that regard.
Thank you. All right, we'll open this item up to the public. Any comments from the public? All right, and seeing none, then we will close public comment and bring it back to the board for action.
I'll move approval. Commendable.
I'll second. Right, motion by Jones, second by Gustafson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. All right, next we will take Item 7A, which is a proclamation recognizing October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and Supervisor Landon is going to read the proclamation.
Great, thank you. Before I read this, I think, I just wanted to share, I know I've shared before that I came from a childhood of domestic violence, and so this is a super important topic to me. I'm very passionate about it, especially from the perspective of children and families. I think, you know, as a child, it's, I had a lot of embarrassment and shame around what was going on in our house, and so I think this provides a great opportunity to really remove some of that stigma for people who may feel like, gosh, I'm alone, or feel embarrassed. And so I'm very happy to read this proclamation. In the matter of a proclamation recognizing October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, whereas first observed in October 1981 as a national day of unity, Domestic Violence Awareness Month is held each October as a way to unite advocates across the nation in their efforts to end domestic violence. And whereas one in every three teenagers, one in every four women, and one in every seven men will experience domestic violence in their lifetime, an average of 24 people per minute are victims of domestic violence by an intimate partner in the United States. And whereas children witness violence in nearly one in four intimate partner violence cases, and 40% to 70% of intimate partner violence perpetrators also abuse the children in the household. Children exposed to domestic violence can experience long-term consequences, including difficulty at school, substance abuse, behavioral problems in adolescence, and serious adult health problems. And whereas domestic violence affects people of all genders, sexual orientations, ages, racial, ethnic, cultural, social, religious, and economic groups in the United States and here in California. And whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse. And whereas there is a need to provide education, awareness, and understanding of domestic violence and its causes, policymakers and communities must work together to transform the conditions that cause domestic violence and support survivor-centered solutions. And whereas all survivors deserve access to culturally responsive programs and services to increase their safety and self-sufficiency, all communities deserve access to culturally responsive prevention programs and initiatives to improve overall community health and safety by challenging the societal norms that perpetuate violence. And whereas important partnerships have been formed among criminal and juvenile justice agencies, healthcare, allied professionals, philanthropic organizations, and victim services to assist victims of domestic violence and their families. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed that the above proclamation was duly passed by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Placer on behalf of the citizens of Placer County at a regular meeting held October 14, 2025, proclaiming the month of October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Landon, and we do have Gary McDonald with Stand Up Placer here in the audience, and so I wanted to invite you up, and if you'd like to make any comments, I think that would be terrific. We would appreciate that.
Thank you very much for that. Supervisor Landon, thank you for those words. I was the oldest of six, and I and my brothers and sisters suffered the same fate. We tried to protect our mother, and often we could not. It happens to a lot of families. It still happens. I always find it heartbreaking when I see the children at the safe house, because I know what they've seen. I know what violence and abuse that they've gone through, and I know how destructive it is. Currently, my heart is filled with gratitude to the Board of Supervisors, to the Executive Director and Council, and staff. We are going to the next level locally with Stand Up Placer. We've, we've come a long way in a short time, and I'm very excited about the changes that we're making. We're upgrading the safe house, and there's a lot of good that's going on. We're re-engaging law enforcement, and we're just easily, we've gone to the next level, and we're going to be adding Medicare, I'm sorry, Medi-Cal, and ECM and CS as part of the plan to have more revenue streams. Recognizing this and giving this proclamation acknowledges that there's a problem out there, but I want to first thank you from my heart that I'm filled with gratitude for everything that you're doing to support Stand Up Placer and the 15,000 people that we served last year. So God bless you, and thank you.
Thank you very much, Gary. Really glad to have you at the helm at Stand Up Placer, and we're fortunate that we have organizations that support families in this need, and it's unfortunate, right, that we still have issues of domestic violence in our community, but having resources for our community really makes a difference, and so appreciate your efforts. I know that there's funding through our Health and Human Services Departments, and there are fundraisers, not only for your organization, but others, and so we just appreciate the hard work that you do.
Thank you.
I don't know if anybody else on my council or colleagues would like to say something? Supervisor Jones?
Yes, I'd like to mention the color purple. The color purple, and Shawna's wearing purple as well, is widely recognized in the fight against domestic violence, and they symbolize courage and survival. And so the reason that we wear purple on this day is to show our support for victims and survivors of domestic violence.
Thank you, Supervisor Jones. Supervisor Gustafson?
I, I thank you, Gary, for your leadership and support, and it's so critical to serving our community. We also have another organization, I don't know if they're in the Tahoe office. Oh, there, here you are, okay.
Wonderful.
I didn't see Paul here, so I wasn't sure. Okay, because the Sierra Community House provides safe, safety for our residents, too. Do you want to come up and say a few words as well?
Please do. And thank you for making your way through the weather. Braving the summit.
It was actually pretty dry, surprisingly, to see you. Good morning, Chair, and members of the board. My name is Elizabeth Ballman, and, not Paul, I'm here for Paul, though. And on behalf of Paul and Sierra Community House, we thank you for your Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclamation. Our organization seeks to be a valued partner in the region along with Stand Up Placer in keeping our communities safe and supported. Sierra Community House serves residents across three counties, primarily focusing on the high-altitude parts of the counties that the Donner Party could not come down from, and, and that many of our community members struggle also to come down for services to the county seats of the counties that we serve, Placer, Nevada, and Washoe. We see firsthand how domestic violence impacts every community. In rural areas like ours, it can be especially difficult to address. Limited transportation, housing, childcare, and confidentiality make it hard for survivors to get help or safety, or safely leave abusive situations. And the isolation of small communities can keep abuse hidden. That's why partnerships matter now more than ever. We can't do this work alone. When nonprofit, local government, law enforcement, healthcare providers, schools, and community members come together, we remove barriers, share resources, and create a stronger safety net for everyone. At Sierra Community House, we support survivors every day and work to prevent violence through education, advocacy, and community engagement, like Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We will have our Purple event on Thursday, up in Truckee, downtown. But awareness and change don't happen in a vacuum. They happen when leaders like you take a stand. We want to sincerely thank the Placer County Board of Supervisors. Proclamations like this are more than symbolic. They send a clear message that domestic violence is not a private issue, it is a community issue, and that survivors are seen, believed, and supported. Thank you for your leadership, partnership, and continued commitment to safety and hope in our region. We, as advocates in our field, we care so much about the needs of the community members that we serve, and when our needs are met, we can do a better job. And this kind of recognition, support, acknowledgement, and community really helps meet our needs. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Amy?
I need to mention one more thing. I would be remiss if I didn't recognize Supervisor Dematte and our CEO, Daniel Chatney, for also wearing purple ties in recognition.
Thank you. Let's see, no other comments here? Anyone else in the public like to make a public comment on this item? All right, and then seeing none, we'll bring it back to approve the commendation.
I will move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, and why don't we come down, and we'll present the proclamation to both of our organizations? Thank you both for being here today. make sure we do that. So that would be really nice. And actually, maybe we can do this, Gary, if you wouldn't mind handing it to her, and then we'll get you another one, because you're not up the hill.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that would be perfect.
I can deliver it, though, too.
Okay, we'll figure that out. We'll have somebody figure it out, maybe.
Okay. Thank you all.
Appreciate it. Okay, thank you, everyone. We will move to Item 8A, which is a Public Works Item, Ordinance for Cross-Connection Control Program for County Public Water System. Good morning, Robyn.
Good morning. Chair Gore, members of the board, council, and CEO. Rob Mahoney, Utility Program Manager for Department of Public Works. Today's staff is recommending the board take the following three actions. Number one, introduce and waive oral reading of an ordinance adding Chapter 13, Article 1310 of the Placer County Code to implement a cross-connection control program for the county public water system and to amend Chapter 13, Article 1312, subsection 1312350E of the Placer County Code. Number two, approve a fiscal year 2526 budget amendment, number AM 01247, for Zona Benefit 06A1 Sheridan Water in the amount of $36,000 and cancel reserves in the amount of $36,000. And number three, determine the proposed actions are not projects pursuant to CEQA Guidelines Section 15378. For background, the California State Water Resources Control Board adopted the Cross-Connection Control Policy Handbook to protect public health through the establishment of standards intended to ensure public water systems, drinking water distribution systems are not contaminated from non-potable sources by installing backflow prevention assemblies where potential cross-connections have been identified. The Cross-Connection Control Policy Handbook became effective on July 1, 2024, and compliance with it is mandatory for all California public water systems. Placer County Code, Placer County owns and operates two public water systems. One serves 198 connections in Sheridan, and the other serves up to nine connections for county facilities near eastern regional landfill in Truckee. Staff anticipate that approximately five to 13 properties in Sheridan and zero properties in the Truckee area may require installation of a backflow prevention assembly. Staff have determined that the cost to implement the program can be absorbed into the existing Sheridan water budget, and I speak of Sheridan because that's the one that has the potential for installing these devices. Staff recommend the board approve the proposed budget amendment of $36,000 to cover and track the estimated cost of installation of those devices in Sheridan. Staff recommend the board adopt the proposed ordinance adding Chapter 13, Article 1310 of the Placer County Code to provide the county with legal authority to implement and enforce the county's cross-connection control program. Staff also recommend that the board approve moving the Sheridan water fee schedule from Ordinance Section 1312350E to Section 1310100. Actual fees and charges included in the proposed Section 1310100 do not change the current fees and charges applicable to the property owners in Sheridan, and there is no impact to the general fund. So with that, I will entertain any questions you might have.
Thank you, Robyn. Appreciate that report. Any questions from my colleagues?
Just one. Thanks, Robyn, for that. Those have to be tested annually? The backflows?
They will need to be tested moving forward, so we're going to install new ones where needed.
So who's going to be responsible for that?
Then we will be responsible for it. The county's water system in Sheridan will be responsible for it. We anticipate that should be absorbed into the existing water budget.
Okay.
We have, we have some reserves that we're going to be pulling out of in order to implement the initial installation of the devices and then ongoing maintenance and testing and reporting to the state.
Okay. I just know I have one on my property, and we pay for it, I just don't want to have to pass that along to other residents, so.
Yeah, we don't intend to. It'll, it'll be funded through the, the water system budget as it protects the entire system for the community.
Okay, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Let's see, any questions from the public? All right, seeing none, we will close the public comment and bring it back to the board for action.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Motion by Landon, second by Gustafson, and this is a roll call vote, please.
Jones?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Landon?
Yes.
Dematte?
Yes.
Gore?
Aye. Thank you very much, Robyn.
Thank you for your time. Have a good day.
And next we have Item 9A, which is a Placer County Fairgrounds 2024-25 Fairgrounds update. And I'm not sure who's kicking this off, so come on up, and PVT can come on up as well. Good morning.
Good morning. Jamie Johnson, Project Manager with General Services, Real Estate Services Division. I'm here today with one action request to receive a status update on the Placer County Fairgrounds from Placer Valley Tourism. Today's presentation will provide a status update on the operation and management of the fairgrounds from the start of 2024 through the first half of 2025. The Placer County Fairgrounds is also known as At the Grounds, is approximately 61 acres of county-owned land in the city of Roseville, near the intersection of Washington and All American City Boulevard. And the operation and management of the fairgrounds is the responsibility of the South Placer County. The operation and management of the fairgrounds is the responsibility of South Placer County Tourism, DBA Placer Valley Tourism, through the Assignment, Obception, and Operation Agreement approved by the county's board back in March of 2017. Today with me is Carrie Summers, Kim Summers, I'm sorry, the CEO of Placer Valley Tourism, and Carrie Finkhizer, the General Manager of At the Grounds, and they will take the presentation from here. Thank you. Good morning, everybody. Great to see you.
Morning, Kim.
All right. All right, so the last two years, we've had great success with our annual Placer County Fair. Traditionally, it's held the last weekend in June, always running time for, you know, triple-digit weather, as we like to be prepared for. But in 2004, we had really great success. We received multiple awards from the Western Fairs Association, first place for our fair logo, and our carnival as well. And then we celebrated this year, most recently, our 87th year for the fair, 2025. Although the triple-digit heat kept some of our attendance down, it was our third highest attendance since taking over operations of the fairgrounds since 2017. And every year, we see continued growth through our sponsorships, community participation, and especially our livestock auction. Our livestock auction in 2024 was our highest yet, but we had a really big selling hog or pig go through that livestock auction. 2025, while not as great of a success, still really great numbers turned out for that as well. We've, as I mentioned, we've received many recognitions and awards. As you see here, we've received a recognition from the House of Representatives and the State Assembly for the Placer County Fair and the great work that we're doing in the As we look at the fair itself, we always look at ways to expand, and one of the nice features that we have on property is the Roblin Center, which is 160,000 square feet. Because of the hardwood floors in there, we have to keep it air-conditioned, so we actually have really kind of transformed the inside of the Roblin Center into a mini fair. So, we've moved the majority of our commercial vendors inside. We partnered with the Placer Wine and Ale Trail in '24 and did some wine tasting in there, and just expanded it for this year in 2025. We have a family fun zone where we have free activities for all families, the young and old at heart, as well as an ongoing growth of the annual rib cook-off, where we have great community support from judges, both in a judge's choice and then a people's choice as well. So, it's lots of familiar faces here that attend the rib cook-off, which we appreciate on that side. As we really look at the success of the fair for us, when we first took over in 2017, most people didn't even realize the county fair was still happening. And for us, we really wanted to put effort into that, really turning that product around, and every year, we've continued to see it grow. And really, one area that we really have, where we kind of look as a benchmark to see how good the product is and if the community is supporting it, if the business community is supporting the event, is to see the sponsorships grow. And every year, we have to add and find more and more ways for people to sponsor the event, and we're just really seeing the community to support that. In fact, after this year's fair in 2025, the following week, we already had two sponsors want to come back and rebook. So, again, just a really great way to benchmark that we're providing a great product for our As I mentioned, the junior livestock auction has been a great focus. This is a really, really huge component of the fair as we celebrate livestock and agriculture in the county, and we have a great livestock community that supports this product, and really, without our committee, we would not be able to do it without them. They live and breathe livestock every day and really helping put this, a great product together for our fair. And as I mentioned, in 2024, the price per animal surged to just under $3,000, 25% up from 2023. 2024, we had not, or we actually had the most amount at $461,000, as you can see, their highest in sales. 2025, although not quite that highest, it was the second-highest year to date. And in 2024, I'm going to ask Carrie real quick, 2024 really jumped the mark because we had one animal sell for?
$32,000.
$32,000, one animal. So, unfortunately, we did not have that person come back this year, or at least without that big of a wallet, but it just kind of showcases really the love and support that we have the community. So, hopefully, next year, we'll have somebody else come back out with that one. And then another show key, a showpiece for us is the Roblin Center. Hopefully, all of you have had a chance to come out and experience this lovely venue. It continues to be the state-of-the-art venue, not only in California, but really the western region. It has been sought after many times for many events. It is an ongoing piece in the state legislature as the state actually looks to have, or at least tourism advocates look to see, put together a sports funding from the state level, and the Roblin Center is a great signature piece that is continuously brought up at the state level to showcase what sports tourism continues to the community. And to have something right here in the Placer County has really been enabled the county to kind of hit the map for us. The venue, as I mentioned, is 160,000 square feet. We do 12 basketball courts in there, which can be converted to 24 volleyball courts, 35-foot ceiling heights, really allows us to do a ton of events. This past weekend, actually on Sunday, we had a major cheerleading event, just a one day, but we saw a couple thousand people come on property and be able to showcase all of those items. One thing that we have looked to do every year, obviously, we try and grow and really fine-tune our operations. In 2024, we had, we launched our own in-house concessions, so we took a portion of the lobby, the atrium inside the Roblin Center, which we were only, we're doing vending machines, and kind of ramped up to do our own kind of grab-and-go concession stands. We've sold over 8,000 pretzels in the first year. So, fun fact, they always want nacho cheese to go with their pretzels. So, that's usually a nice little upsell for us, but we've really just looked at that as another way to expand. With sports tournaments on property, a lot of our attendees don't necessarily want a corn dog first thing in the morning, but they want an acai bowl, or a smoothie, or some of those healthier options. So, we've really done a great job at partnering with local food trucks, concessionaires to come in and really provide those healthier options, and then we can help subsidize with some of those, you know, bagels, granola, or wraps that we can do grab-and-go in style in the atrium. As well as, we continue to see weekend business really kind of be our main anchor there. Volleyball weekends, volleyball tournaments almost every weekend partnered with basketball. But where we do see room for growth potential would be midweek, so we really have been focusing on working with our corporate businesses, our meeting markets, to see how we can bring in some more of that midweek business to the fairgrounds as well. And we've really done a great job at working with some of our utility service providers, and the parking lots, believe it or not, provides a great training ground, training area for all of our utility vehicles and things of that nature. So, it's been a really great partnership, and again, fostering people to come out midweek to help support our local economy as well. So, besides just the sports tourism, we really are so much more besides just the Roblin Center and the fair. We do a lot of community events. We actually just had a sales meeting earlier this morning where we call a campus-wide sellout, where we have three different events all happening on the same day in different areas, but from a business meeting to a social event to a graduation is just really all the different things that we are able to do on property, and really, just flexibility for us continues to be key, as well as making sure that we are doing continuous improvements to the grounds as well. So, I'm always looking at ways to help improve and set up even better service as we move forward. The All American Speedway is still going strong. In March 2024, we had the 70th racing season happen at the All American Speedway there at the grounds. As you can see here pictured, we had Kena Mitchell of Loomis become the first female champion, as you can see pictured, and then our fourth-generation driver Kylie Glick.
Yay!
There you go, a local. And it continues to be a great partnership. We've partnered with high-performance racing, Tim Huddleston, who owns actually two different tracks in Northern California, and he's really been able to bring the race community together. He has a working partnership with Bill McAnally, too, so to really garner that love and affinity with racing has been ongoing to see that. Last year, in case you did not notice, in 2024, we hosted the Mountain Mandarin Festival at first time at the grounds. It moved down the hill to At the Grounds, despite the first day, an atmospheric river coming through the property. I tell you what, those Mandarin growers are tough. They just embrace the rain, and they, do you want to go inside? We have a Roblin Center, and they said, hey, we love the rain, we'll stay outside. So, despite the rain, people came out. It was really, really a fun event. We're really looking forward to it coming back out in a few weeks, and hopefully, minus the atmospheric river, it will continue to have a great turnout for that, and we're really excited to continue these type of community partnerships.
What's the date this year, Kim?
That's a good question.
22nd?
22nd.
23rd.
There you go.
Thank you, I'm putting it on my calendar.
Fantastic. Thank you. And just some stats about how we've been able to utilize the campus. Some of these stats reflect not only what we're able to do at the grounds, but really what Placer Valley Tourism is doing a whole for Roseville, Rockland, and Lincoln and the South Placer County. So, for Placer Valley Tourism, across our three cities and our different facilities, we've hosted over 650 events, generated over 600, almost 660,000 room nights. Interesting fact, of the total of room nights that PVT generates, more than half of those come from At the Grounds. So, prior to building the Roblin Center, we were not able to host any volleyball tournaments in our footprint in all of South Placer County, and now it is our biggest event that we can do and generates over 10,000 room nights just for hotels, just volleyball alone. So, having these tournaments here, getting the people to not only stay here, but to eat and, you know, buy groceries and gas in our county has really been a huge impact for us. Traffic is booming as we go through. Hopefully, you guys have all noticed that the roundabout is now open, much better traffic management with that roundabout. Always takes a few months for people to understand how it flows, but it's been really nice, especially when we do the Fourth of July fireworks show. It really helps kind of streamline some of the traffic that we have down there as well, and just has become a much safer intersection all the way around, and really keeps continuing the, that traffic flow. And I guess that's it? That's it? That's it? No, that's it.
Wonderful. Thank you, Kim, very much. I really appreciate the work PVT has done on our fairgrounds. It really has changed the viability of the fair, which is really important to our community, and then as well as the Roblin Center, all of the great work. I mean, I think about years ago, when the P-Bid was put in place with the hotels, and it was a, it was a big stretch, it was sort of unknown, but the payoff that we have had for our hoteliers and our community together, how you, how PVT has been able to sponsor local organizations and events, it's just been terrific. And so, I really appreciate you taking the reins the last couple of years. You and your team have really done an excellent job, and this is just a really great example, too, of a private-public partnership, right, where our county staff could not run the fairgrounds the way your team has been running them, and you have a source of funding, which is just wonderful, and we're going to talk about another bid later on today, but it really makes a difference when we can leverage additional funds to provide great services in our community. So, thank you so much. Supervisor Gustafson?
Oh, I just wanted to thank you as well. I am envious of the growth you're seeing in tourism expenditures in your community, and it's so important to protecting our quality of life. Often, people think that tourism is anti-quality of life, and in fact, it is one of the cleanest and best industries that we can help support in overall spending throughout the region. So, thank you for all these efforts. It's incredible.
Let's see, I'd like Supervisor Jones.
I would just like to say thank you for a job well done. Great job to you and your whole team, and the fair and the rib tasting contest is a wonderful event as well. It's a great job.
Supervisor Landon.
I'll just echo what they all said, but I want to also know what kind of animal it was that sold for $3,000.
$32,000.
It was a pig. A pig, nice.
I'm guessing a very big, well-fed pig.
Very tasty bacon, I'm sure.
It might have been a grandfather buying his grand.
I would imagine, yeah.
It's all about who you know sometimes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say at RCRC, the cow only went for $8,000, so, you know.
But it was a baby.
It was a miniature, not a baby.
A miniature, oh, it was, oh, I didn't know. All right. Let's see, let's go ahead and open this item up to the public for any public comment. And then, Jamie, did you want to finish up? Is there anything else you wanted to say?
That's the end of our presentation. Thank you so much.
All right, well, thank you again for your hard work. Really appreciate the update and the presentation. I know there's more work to come.
Thank you.
Thanks, ladies. All right, let us go to Item 10A, which is the Auburn Library Furniture Project, the agreement with Miles Treaster and Associates. And there they are, waiting patiently in the chambers. Good morning.
Good morning. Chair, members of the board, Shawna Howard, Senior Project Manager with General Services, Capital Improvements Division. The item before you today is the Auburn Library Furniture Project located at 350 Nevada Street in Auburn. This project is a separate project from the Auburn Library Critical Maintenance and Modernization Project, currently under construction. Furniture and shelving are considered ineligible cost and do not qualify for grant funding under that project. The actions requested include, one, authorize the Director of General Services, or Dees Nee, to execute an agreement with Miles Treaster and Associates to provide space planning, design layout, and the purchase and installation of furniture for the Auburn Library in an amount not to exceed $798,286, subject to county council and risk management concurrence. Two, approve a fiscal year 2025-26 budget amendment, number AM-01241, in an amount of $999,815, to increase appropriations offset with the cancellation of library reserves. And three, determine the proposed action is exempt from environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, pursuant to CEQA Guidelines, Section 15301, existing facilities. The current critical maintenance and modernization construction activities provide a unique opportunity to evaluate the vacant first-floor space and the flow of the library. The Auburn Library Furniture Project will provide the first floor with a newly renovated library with a modern layout. The second floor and staff areas have also been evaluated and will be included in the project. To assist the county with the design, purchase, delivery, and installation of the furniture, Capital Improvements worked with procurement on a request-for-proposals competitive process to select a firm. On June 19, 2025, notices announcing and RFP were distributed to over 450 firms or individuals and were accessed by 25 firms or individuals. On July 18, 2025, 12 proposals were received and evaluated by a panel of county staff. Three firms were invited to interview. After completing the interview process, the panel selected Miles Treaster and Associates, also known as MTA. We are requesting delegated authority to execute an agreement with MTA for a two-phase contract, Phase One for the design, plans, meetings, and permit support, Phase Two for the purchase, delivery, and installation of the furniture. This agreement includes an owner-controlled contingency for potential unanticipated project costs. The furniture is currently scheduled to be ordered this fall, with installation occurring in spring 2026, with the completion of the current construction project. The Auburn Library is anticipated to reopen in summer 2026. This item includes a budget amendment to fund the project by use of library reserves, and there are no impacts to the general fund. This concludes my presentation. I am available for any questions related to the Auburn Library Furniture Project. Kelly Heikula, Staff Services Manager with Library Administration, is also here and available for questions related to library operations.
Thank you very much. Questions from my colleagues? I see no questions. Let's open this item up to the public for any comment from the public. All right, and for the record, I'll close public comment, but I did ask, how old is that furniture?
Yeah.
Right, that's a lot of money. And then I was like, the furniture's like 50 years old.
Yeah.
So, I can understand the need to upgrade, and it is...
They move to the museums after this.
There you go. But it is going to be, you know, they'll find another way to utilize it, and it is coming from the library fund, which is a good thing, so.
I'd be happy to make a motion.
Great. All right, motion, I'll have a second by Dematte. Motion by Gustafson, and this is a roll call vote, please.
Gustafson? Yes. Landon?
Yes.
Dematte?
Yes.
Jones?
Aye.
Gore?
Aye. Thank you.
All right, we have item 12A, which is fire apparatus purchase. Good morning, Sarah. Nice to see you.
Good morning. I was going to check to make sure it was morning as well. Good morning, Chair Gore, members of the board, Mr. Chatney and Ms. Swab. I'm Sarah Poindexter, Principal Management Analyst with the County Executive Office, here today on behalf of Placer County Fire to request the following actions from your board. Action one, approve the award of a purchase order to Kalmakov Enterprises Incorporated, Doing Business as Fire Apparatus Solutions, a California corporation, for the purchase of two Type I fire engines and one Smail ladder truck in the amount not to exceed $4,833,886 with risk management and county council concurrence. Action two, approve a fiscal year 2025-26 budget amendment, number 01240, for County Fire in the amount of $4,833,886, to be offset by $1,443,354 from the Placer County Fire Capital Facilities Fund and Cancel Fire Protection Fund Reserves in the amount of $3,390,532. Action three, authorize the purchasing manager to sign all required documents. And action four, authorize the addition of these vehicles to the fiscal year 2025-26 capital asset list. The proposed purchase before you today is for two Type I fire engines and one Smail ladder truck, which would replace existing apparatus that have exceeded their useful life at Station 70, which is located on Wise Road in rural Lincoln, and Station 77, located on Athens Avenue next to the Thunder Valley Casino Resort, as well as add a new engine to serve out of the new Bickford Ranch Fire Station once constructed. The two Type I fire engines will be purchased through Fire Apparatus Solutions of Rialto, California, via a competitively awarded contract with Sourcewell, thus adhering to procurement policy Section 3.5A. The ladder truck, also being purchased through Fire Apparatus Solutions, is a unique opportunity, as a 2025 demo model recently became available for purchase. It's being offered with a full vehicle warranty at a discounted rate, which offers substantial savings from ordering a custom-built ladder truck. Furthermore, this truck will be ready to deliver at the end of the calendar year as opposed to the typical three-to-four-year build times. Based on the favorable pricing and immediate availability of this vehicle, it would be unlikely to find a more advantageous opportunity as a result of a competitive process, which aligns with procurement policy Section 3.5E. For some additional context, the two ladder trucks currently in Placer County Fire system have both recently undergone substantial repairs, rendering them out of service for extended periods of time. Due to the nature of the casino high-rise, a ladder truck is always needed to be staged nearby, which can result in the ladder truck from Station 180 at Atwood needing to move over and cover, thus removing that asset from the North Auburn area. Replacement of the ladder truck at the casino station will allow for the current truck there to be placed as a reserve, now ensuring the availability of a ladder truck in both locations should a truck go out of service in the future. The total cost of this purchase, as stated earlier, is $4,833,886. The replacement Type I fire engine and ladder truck will be funded by Fire Protection Fund Reserves. And the new engine being purchased for Bickford Ranch will be funded by the Placer County Fire Capital Facilities Fund. There are no, there is no impact to the general fund as a result of this action. I'd also like to extend a special thanks to John Manning with Procurement Services, who helped us move extremely quickly to secure this ladder truck before another agency was able to snag it. So many thanks to John. And with that, I will conclude my presentation. I also have Chief Estes here with me to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Sarah. Appreciate that. I do have a quick question. I'm guessing the chief can answer the question for me. And that is, when was the fire station next to Thunder Valley established and opened? I know that they helped fund it, but I'm just, I can't remember when it was. And it just gives me a sense of how old the equipment is out there.
Yes, thank you. And good morning, Chair Gore, members of the board. So the Station 77, which is called Sunset Fire Station, was kind of a two-phase approach. The original fire station was built in 2006 or '07, and that's when they first built the casino. The high-rise was built later, about five years later. And I believe the extension or the expansion of the fire station and the purchase of the ladder truck to service the high-rise was, I believe, in 2009. So the two ladder trucks that we have now were purchased almost about the same time. One was a year old that we got from another agency in the South Bay, and one was purchased new. They're both 2008s and 2009s. So just to give you some context to the, to the age of the apparatus.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much. Any other questions?
I had a quick question, chief, if you don't mind. Well, Sarah can maybe answer, but typically, do we look at the ladder trucks as hours of use or miles of use when we talk about their age and their capabilities?
Yeah, great question. A little of both. The apparatus itself, as far as the fire engine, ladder truck, any of our equipment are, are part of a fleet acquisition plan that does have a usable lifespan on that. That's typically with mileage. The unique thing about the ladder trucks is two-part. One is they each, they weigh about 75,000 pounds apiece. So the abuse that they take, especially when you look at our road systems across Placer County, there's a mixture of very developed, you know, wide road systems to some, what we'd still call rural systems. So they do take a little bit more abuse. The other thing is that the certification process for an aerial ladder, our particular ladder trucks are 105-foot. The certification process for the cables, the hydraulics, all that stuff is very, very intensive. So there is an hourly requirement for that, as well as the mileage on the actual vehicle. It's a, it's a little of both.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It's a lot of complexity in those vehicles.
Thank you. Let's see. I see no other questions. I will open this item to the public. Any comment from the public? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for any further conversation or action.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Demate, second by Jones. I'll, a roll call vote, please.
Landon?
Yes.
Demate?
Yes.
Jones?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Gore?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, I want to thank you, too, for getting the demo vehicle. I mean, that is a great saving. So thank you. Sorry I didn't mention that earlier.
Thank you very much.
All right. We next have our supplemental item, which is item 12B. And it's to consider resolution of intent for the renewal of the North Lake Tahoe Tourism Business Improvement District. Good morning, Stephanie.
Good morning, Chair Gore, members of the board. Daniel Karen, Stephanie Holloway, your Deputy CEO in the Tahoe area. I am also joined by Tony Kurwowski, President and CEO of the North Tahoe Community Alliance. And I'm here this morning to, and excited to introduce an item of a resolution of intent to initiate proceedings to renew the North Lake Tahoe Tourism Business Improvement District. So as you mentioned, Chair Gore, earlier, another T-Bid for us to work through in partnership with the North Tahoe Community Alliance here this morning. So again, excited to introduce this item, to renew the T-Bid. I want to go through a little bit of history for you to start with. So your board received a full report of, from the North Tahoe Community Alliance at your September 23 meeting. So I won't go into so much because you have that background on the T-Bid itself, but really want to focus on the items for the renewal request here today. So as, as some of you know, this T-Bid was approved by your board on March 9 of 2021 for an initial five-year term. And so we are coming up on June 30, 2026, which is the expiration date. The assessments under the T-Bid did start July 1 of 2021, later that year upon your board approval. And as I mentioned, a five-year term. So the assessments that are collected under this T-Bid are collected on not only lodging, similar to our TOT in the region, but also tourism-related businesses. So that's restaurant, retail activities, and attractions. And so both of those pieces are in the framework of the approval of the T-Bid. I do want to also bring to your attention the boundary of the T-Bid. This is a little bit different from our TOT boundary in eastern Placer County. It does not include Donner Summit. The other differentiation here in the T-Bid is there are two zones, specifically Zone 1 and Zone 2. Zone 1 being the area of, of the boundary of the Lake Tahoe Basin, outside of that being Zone 2. And, and this was purposeful. There are two different assessments, one in each zone. The lake area having a 2% assessment, and the area there in purple, Zone 2, having a 1% assessment. And I'll talk a little bit more about why that is. So as authorized by your board, the North Tahoe Community Alliance was designated as the current T-Bid Owners Association. And I'll just note for the record, the North Tahoe Community Alliance is a business under, doing business under the legal name of the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association, Inc. And so that was the original organization as part of the T-Bid. And that has, name has transitioned over the last four years. So NTCI does have a robust strategic plan. They've been working on that, as was mentioned in September to your board, really including a promotion of economic vitality, health, resiliency, community vitality, and then also environmental stewardship. And so they are the budgetary and fiduciary responsibility agency of the T-Bid Assessment Funds. And as your board knows, there is a partnership on the TOT. Specific areas of the TOT, their board does advise on expenditures of a portion of that TOT. And so I just want to highlight that a little bit because it's a really important piece of the renewal request of our partnership with the North Tahoe Community Alliance. Historically, the county through TOT funding has supported the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association and now the North Tahoe Community Alliance with TOT funding in support of marketing of tourism and, and just development of tourism in our region. And so with the onset and approval of your board of the T-Bid, or current T-Bid, those dollars were freed up. And so we talked about freed-up TOT, and that'll be a term that we use consistently through this process. But those dollars were freed up. They were identified by your board to be used for critical housing and transportation infrastructure and projects and programs moving forward. And so that is part of our partnership, part of our collaboration in this T-Bid moving forward. And so I will mention, with, with the request for renewal, we will be working on a new contract related to the TOT and advisement of that TOT moving forward with them as well. So just to highlight some successes here, you saw this slide in September. But, you know, the T-Bid dollars plus the TOT advisement that your board allocates for this initial term has resulted in a fair amount of investment back into the community. And so you can see here $34 million in different areas of the TOT T-Bid Dollars at Work program. The other thing I want to mention here, and it's important for your board to know, our CEO office, myself included, and my staff in the Tahoe area does have a pretty vital role with the NTCI on not only the T-Bid and the process of, you know, reviewing financials. There is a committee that I sit on related to the T-Bid funds. And then also the TOT advisement. We are there from the beginning of the advertisement of the grant, all the way through invoicing. And so just for your board to note that we are very active in this space and collaboration. So the MDP, I want to talk about the Management District Plan a little bit. This, the purpose of this plan is really the operating plan that Tony can speak to a little bit more for the T-Bid. So outlined on, sorry, documents have been on file for review, but they have been working on some edits to the existing Management District Plan. And I'll just mention a couple notably here. The, the term that's identified in the request before, coming before you, is a 10-year term. So like I said, initially, there was a five-year request. This term, they are asking for a 10-year renewal of, of the T-Bid. And that is identified in their Management District Plan as well. The other thing I'll mention in these changes is a number of, kind of more minor changes on here. But the assessment structure has changed with the removal of the Tier 2 and Tier 3 areas that are currently in the T-Bid. And I'll let Tony talk a little bit more if there's questions about that. But essentially, these are some of the smaller businesses that are in the current T-Bid. And so this is just an outline of those assessments. As I mentioned, lodging businesses are assessed currently with a 2% on lodging in Zone 1 and a 1% in Zone 2. And I'll, I'll just pause here and give you a little bit of history. The, the reason for that differentiation, again, goes back to our partnership with the TOT as your board was deliberating on use, the potential use of that freed-up TOT into the future. It was recognized that there are other, a, other T-Bids. Our Olympic Valley, El Pi Meadow area does have a T-Bid that is specifically related to providing services for micro-transit. And then also in the North Star area, there is, you know, other collections that fund transportation services within North Star as well. So there is a bit of an equalization related to the recognition of other funding for transportation. And then I'll just mention these other retail businesses, retail restaurant activities and attraction businesses do have a separate assessment rate as well. So the petition drive, I'll just say that the Board of Directors of the North Tahoe Community Alliance did review the MDP and approved a draft final of that document. And that started the petition drive. And so NTCI staff has been out petitioning current businesses within the T-Bid to achieve a threshold of 50, greater than 50% of the assessments within the T-Bid boundary to be qualified on the petition to bring before your board here today. And so I'm happy to report, at the time of the agenda posting, we did have 51.66%. And so the reason we are here before your board today. So with that, just a timeline, there are a number of steps in this process. Today's resolution, resolution of intent request to renew the T-Bid, there is a requirement of a 45-day noticing that will need to go out if your board does approve the resolution by the 25th. We are anticipating a public meeting before your board at our Tahoe meeting, November 18, and then a final public hearing to consider the renewal before the Board of Supervisors on the 9th. The proposed timeline for collection and transition to this new T-Bid format would be July 1 of 2026. So with that, I will read your action for the record. We'll consider a resolution of intent to renew the, renewal of the North Lake Tahoe Tourism Business Improvement District to, one, receive petitions to renew the North Lake Tahoe Tourism Business Improvement District for a 10-year term from business owners who pay more than 50% of the total assessments to be levied. And, two, adopt a resolution of intent to set a time and date for a public meeting and a public hearing to renew the North Lake Tahoe Tourism Business Improvement District. And with that, I will offer Tony a time at the mic here to see if he has any additional details to give you.
Please.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, members of the board, good morning for a few more minutes. Tony Kurwowski, NTCI for the record. And I couldn't be more excited to be here today. I really couldn't even. The weather over the summit couldn't hold me back. You know, where we are right now with the T-Bid renewal is a milestone. It's a milestone of workflow that started over a year ago. And I think Stephanie hit on one thing I just want to echo throughout my time here with you today, and that's partnership. And how exciting it was in this, in this process to get where we are today, to be able to spend time with a lot of the partners who are involved in this, whether it's our, our a lot of the partners who were involved in this, whether it's our, our small businesses, the ad hoc committee which we convened to help us really explore what were the tenants of the new T-Bid that we wanted to bring forward. And those, that ad hoc committee was just representatives of our business community, the ones who volunteered to come forward, spend their time over the course of the year debating, and then taking back out to the business community on their own and kind of trying to figure out what people would like to see on, uh, in, in bringing back through that channel, um, for feedback. So, it was a really big collaborative effort. Um, one, I'd like to acknowledge, two, um, that extends not just into our business community and to our time at the NTCA, but also with our partners at Placer County. In the process, we learned that some recent org changes at Placer County have led to, um, certain departments moving around, one of which being Revenue Services going from, um, CEO's Office to, um, Treasurer Tax Collector. So, I want to start off by thanking, uh, Tristan Butcher and his team, um, for helping us get where we are today. Um, you know, their new responsibilities with collections and oversight of, um, things like the process to renew, um, have just been met with nothing but smiles and how can we help? So, I really appreciate them. Um, a huge shout out also to our local team at the CEO's Office in Eastern Placer County. Stephanie and her team have just been huge partners from the very beginning. Um, as you remember when we started off, gosh, forming the T-Bid, activating it, everything up to developing and, um, implementing our Grant Framework Program. It's been, um, a great partnership, and I want to say that we wouldn't be here today where we are without them. Um, also, the support of this body right here over time and being willing to, um, hear the feedback from Eastern Placer County and desire for oversight of tourism dollars that are generated locally, to be identified for projects and programs to benefit our community and utilized as public funds for reinvestment to, um, create a better tomorrow for us on things like workforce housing, transportation, human impact mitigation, business advocacy and support, and much, much more. Um, your support of that has been incredible. Um, I want to s- also acknowledge that the percentage that we got to, that 51 and some change that let us activate this, that was unlocked in just about two weeks of petitioning. Our, uh, our Civitas Advisors, who are the consulting organization who help us bring this forward, this work forward, were incredibly impressed about that timetable. They hadn't seen that anywhere else in any other T-Bid jurisdiction to come back with that level of support that quickly. I'll also say that I'm very confident, uh, as I stand here today, I know that we're at about 54%, so we've come up a few more, and we still have a lot of work going on and a lot of conversations going on. And I believe that we will, by the time we come back in December, have around 70% of our businesses signed on to this. So, that is a spectacular amount of support. Um, and that's been our goal from, from the beginning, and, um, I think that's really due to our collaborative efforts and implementation of the T-Bid and bringing those dollars back to the community and then showing the successes based on that. So, again, um, acknowledging everyone here, um, all of the partnerships that are out there, the private-public partnership. This is, to your, your point in your earlier statement, Madam Chair, private-public partnerships can be incredibly fruitful for communities. So, thank you all. And I know there was a question in there, but I will, um, I'll just pause, cause I know there's probably a few questions, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that, um, both of you. I actually do have that question. You answered my question about the percentage and where you thought it would get to by the time it comes to the board for, um, a hearing. Uh, but the Tier 2 and the Tier 3 businesses and the changes you'd made there, I'd love to have you clarify what that decision was and why.
Why, yeah. So, when we reviewed the data, and we know this from, um, just collecting over the past four years, um, those first, those Tier 2 and Tier 3 are very small independent, um, contributors. So, the level of, um, qualification for each of those tiers is, is, uh, a revenue stream between $75,000 a year and $150,000 a year, or $75,000 and lower. Now, if you can imagine a business with a gross revenue stream of...
Just a hundred.
$100,000 or less a year is a relatively small business, number one. Two, they tend to be transient in our area. So, they're not, they're not living in our area, they're not in our area a lot. They're coming in and out of the area either for like a farmer's market, or a trade show, or, um, something like, uh, Made in Tahoe, coming from South Shore up into the district. Um, so they're, they're, they're not really our core investors in the T-Bid. And, two, um, you know, we were having some challenges around compliance. So, we were trying to chase down these small individual contributors, and we found out that we were spending, you know, too much time and had to do an exercise and ask ourselves the question, is juice really worth the squeeze here? And, um, that came back as to, you know what, maybe there's a different way we can approach this. And that approach is, we want to engage those small businesses still. We want them to be part of our community. So, what we're going to be doing is, is we have the, um, contacts for all of those businesses, and we're going to be handing those over to our chamber team for them to do outreach now and say, hey, for a level of membership, you can still belong and have all the benefits that you did before, which is very important to some of those small businesses. So, we want to include them in that ability. Um, but for them to be inclusive in the T-Bid and then for us to be able to have this problematic, um, issue of, of trying to trace down the payments and, um, the time we're spending doing that between our time at the NTCA as well as Placer County's, um, Revenue Services Department just doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
So, it's an efficiency we've gained and a pretty dramatic one.
That's very helpful. I appreciate the clarification. Supervisor Gustafson?
Uh, yes. Thank you, Tony, and thanks for all the hard work, Stephanie and Tony, and in bringing this forward. Um, we had a co- public commenter last meeting, I believe, that questioned the difference between the tier, uh, the Zone 1 and Zone 2 and why those were less. My understanding is why the resorts are less is that in the case of Pelisades, they're in another T-Bid for transportation of 1.5%. So, they're actually paying more than if they were paying the 2%. And with North Star, I believe they already provide all the transportation services out of their bottom line within the valley. Is that correct? Is that, is my understanding still correct?
That was my recollection.
That was correct.
Yeah. And again, the Olympic Valley, uh, El Pi Meadows T-Bid was renewed, uh, after the initial term.
Right.
Acceptance of this T-Bid.
At a higher rate.
Yes.
So, they're actually paying more. So, I think that the, the commenter last meeting misunderstood and thought that we were giving a benefit to the resort communities to pay less. And actually, I think in both cases, they're probably paying more, one in through T-Bids, one through direct services. Um, but that was a comment that we heard, and I just wanted to correct that if, if it needed to be corrected, which I think it did.
Yeah.
It did, and thank you for that. And if I could build on that with just an additional comment, is just for clarity around the difference between the 1% and 2% is only in the lodging segment. So, all, um, restaurants, activities, uh, retail and attractions all pay the 1% in both Zone 1 and Zone 2. Only in Zone 1 along the lake do the lodging, um, do the lodging businesses pay the extra percent. And that they, uh, they, they convene, or we convene, a committee to help oversee that 1% that's the made-up majority of, um, the lodging providers, um, who, who pay into that extra 1%.
Great. Thank you. Other questions? All right. I don't see any. Let's open this item up to the public for any public comment.
We do have a commenter in Tahoe.
Okay, wonderful. Nice to know that there's somebody in Tahoe. I mean, paying attention to the board meeting, showing up. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. And, uh, thank you guys. I, Adam Wilson with also the North Tahoe Community Alliance. And I just want to, again, echo Tony's thoughts. Just thank you for the partnership, the county, all the different offices. It's really been, uh, a, I think, a really good example of how we can actually reinvest in our communities in a meaningful way with a lot of input from all of the community members that are part of these committees. So, just wanted to thank you for that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Appreciate that very much.
No further commenters.
All right. Um, thank you so much. And with that, we do need to...
I think Stephanie read those.
I read, yeah. I read it into the record.
All right, so.
I'll move approval.
All right. So, we have a motion by Gustafson, second by DeMete, and all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll see you in Tahoe in next month. All right. Next, we have, um, closed session items. I'll ask County Council to report on those.
Board will now adjourn to closed session to consider one item of real property negotiations and two items of existing litigation.
All right. Um, thank you very much. We'll move to closed session. All right, thank you very much. We'll move to closed session.
Thank you for your attendance. We will now adjourn to closed session to consider one item of real property negotiations and two items of existing litigation.
The Board met in closed session and considered the following under conference with real property negotiators. The Board heard a presentation and provided direction on a 5-0 vote. Under existing litigation, County of Placer versus Ultra Power et al., the Board heard a report and provided direction on a 5-0 vote. Final item, Jose Taveras versus County of Placer et al., the Board heard a report and provided direction on a 5-0 vote. This concludes the report out of closed session.
Thank you, Karen. And with that, we are adjourned into our next regular meeting, which is on November 4th. Thank you, everyone.